All right, should we do pre-meeting?
Who wants to start?
Since she has two items.
The first item, I believe that's on the agenda is for the Ridge Townhomes, P R E D Phase 5. This came before you back in January. Nothing has really changed since you guys have seen it last. They are coming back now for a reclamation of final approval. And there are just a couple of conditions that we've attached in the staff report involving escrow for improvements as well as a copy of the C C and ours and estate construct permit. These are things that we will have secured prior to when they're put onto the county commission agenda for the actual final approval. So a reminder, these are three buildings with four townhomes each in them. So we're talking twelve residential units, private roadways in the F R three zone. Do you have any questions?
What condition do they have to do?
What, are there conditions of approval?
Well, on the agreement here saying that you were going to add.
So we do look, this is part of a previously approved C U P. So we have compared what they proposed here with their C U P. Nothing has deviated from that prior approval. So with regards to landscaping, building and roadway out, it's compliant with their original C U P approval. The agreement that we do, what we typically ask for in these types of subdivisions are a copy of the C C and ours to be reported. We also ask for a cost estimate as well as an escrow put up for the improvements, installation of roadways, utilities, things like that. We put together an improvements guarantee agreement based upon that escrow amount. And then we do require estate construct permit as well that allows them to install some of the utilities, water and sewer. Those are required before they can get county commission approval.
What's the construct permit in the state of Utah department has been reviewing the revision of drinking water. Why is that? That seems different from other some approvals.
It's actually a typical requirement, though it may not always be listed. Uh, it's, it's actually a typical requirement, though it may not always be listed.
Why didn't we list it?
I think just to be thorough, try and give more information. We're however, trying to kind of pare down, trying to find the balance of giving too much information that might cause confusion, but making sure we're giving enough so that we have a complete public record. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
I think so.
We have been trying to take note of the conditions that are where the word is off there. But sometimes there's a few that we bill are important with that specific subdivision to put on there. So that's why we have to.
So we've built a bit more important with this particular development than the water. Yeah, that we have to be independent anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
That we emphasize.
Yeah.
Just because sometimes there are certain developers as we work with them, we just kind of get the sense that it's a little bit more of a concern. So we want that to stand out. Um, so it doesn't slip through the cracks. Or that they buy this on.
You guys have any questions with that one? You just want me to move on to the next one? Okay, this is a proposal we got in a few weeks ago. Um, I will tell you that. When the staff report and the information went out to the planning commission, we did not yet have reviews from engineering and fire. We have had those reviews since. Uh, typically these go before you after they've been in our office just a little bit longer. So we've had a little more time for back and forth between the county departments. But we're presenting this to you based on the proposal that was submitted. Um, this proposal is for a development called the Sky Lodge Hotel. If you're familiar with Powder Mountain at the very top of Powder Mountain Road, there is an existing Sky Lodge. They're looking to add to this. So they'll be adding another main building that houses. Thirty, so there are existing three guest rooms. They're looking to add thirty-three guest rooms. And in addition to that, thirty standalone cabins. And there's a fairly detailed site plan that's on there. They have submitted a landscaping plan, which is pretty minimal. We really just want to. The majority actually of the landscaping is native seeds. They want to make sure that everything is as natural as possible. A couple of things to point out, though. Let's see if I can find the change in the site plans on. The applicant, I think initially, based on some conversations with fire district. Is showing two emergency access points off of Powder Ridge Road to access these cabins. Engineering has not approved those. In fact, engineering doesn't want to see those at all. And so I do have their reviews. They, they've been in touch with the fire district. The fire district is now asking the developer. To schedule a meeting with them so they can figure out a different way to make sure that emergency services can access these cabins. So they're not having a hollow grony along four foot wide soft trails from the furthest cabin all the way to the parking lot to the east. So there may end up being. There may be a roadway that comes from the parking lot to the east. Down through the middle of these. I know the developer, that's not the aesthetic they were looking for. But I will mention that. A couple of the, in the staff recommendation, we've specifically called out that they. Not only adhere to all review agency requirements, but specifically and especially, I guess, engineering and Weaver Fire District, just because. They have not had much back and forth with them yet, and they haven't settled on what they'd like to see on the site plan.
Normally you don't see the final approvals till after that's done. Why are we?
That is correct. The applicant wanted this on the agenda this evening. So. The, the planning commission does have the option to table this. If there are issues that you feel should be addressed before you want to see it before you. This could be tabled and come before you will likely come before you at the very next meeting at the end of April. Um, or we can subject this approval to all staff or all review agency recommendations, which would include Weaver Fire District and Engineering as well. But we do typically have a more finalized plan before you. In this meetings.
And you also want to mention that since this report went out. They indicated that they may be making changes and what I. I'm out. We haven't had a chance to review those as staff.
Correct.
And. So we're not sure. And, and so. We would feel easy with you approving that, um, if that comes up in the meeting. So.
Do we know that applicants planning to be here?
As far as I know, they were planning to be here. What they have since discussed with us is instead of installing the main building. They'd like to do something smaller. I think they're looking at cost at the moment. They'd like to try and face this, however. They're going to be making any changes. Planning staff feels they need to come back before you. When they're a little more decided on what they'd like to do. So we told them we would present this with the information that was uploaded with the application. That's all we could really go on and review. Their, the building that they're proposing, planning stuff, no one has had time to review this. We just got the site plan yesterday.
Why are they so adamant it gets on today's agenda?
I think that the, I think a preliminary approval triggers something to do with the financing of this project. And so they're anxious to get the financing going so they can move up forward. That's my understanding, more specific than that. I, I don't know.
Might be a question for them.
Well, because you're saying they're actually, this isn't a final, and they might have made changes to this.
This is what we have. It's not a final because the two emergency access points that are on there will not be on there in the final. So we don't know how. Um, we don't know how EMS is going to access that. The other thing to keep in mind too is the development agreement stated that once. Commercial development is proposed, it triggers the need for a fire station. Weaver Fire District. Has mentioned this in their development agreement that was recorded many years ago. That there would be a need for a truck on site up here at Powder Mountain. They can't run one of theirs up here. So there's a legal agreement that needs to be looked at and come into play here. Likely prior to written approval.
Where do they ask for preliminary, like we've done in the past, where we have. Or was it preliminary?
With subdivisions, we do preliminary and final, but right now.
This is just be the last time we can see.
Yeah. This is a design review.
Why don't we do something like that?
We don't have that in our ordinance right now to do preliminary and final with the final view. It's just. More of a one and done type.
So options are, we can table this until we get a more, like a better picture of what they're actually going to.
What we, we've explained to the developer that you are the approval body. And so we don't like to bring anything before you for final approval until it's pretty complete.
Yeah, when they like push it because they do have their due process. Well, yeah, we can do that, but.
Well, the concern is we'd be approving something that wouldn't look like what's gonna happen.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So when, when in the process should we discuss or fully understand the cost ramifications of the fire? Station and, and or are they operating costs going forward and? Who would bear that and? How would it happen and all of that?
So that's something typically that is out of the planning commission's purview. That's something that we look at internally as far as the. The costs and things like that. So that's something you would put a condition in there that that would be addressed.
So for example, I, and this has been out in the public, I mean, a bit, and I've heard people say what? Why do we, public after? Bear the cost of a fire station for their hotel comments generally like that, which may or may not be informed, but. You know, that kind of vibe is out there. That should be addressed.
For sure. And that's why that's always been in the development agreement that when the fire district says it's time to do that, right? Then that falls upon them. And right now the fire district is, and it's always been when they decide to do a hotel. That's kind of what the fire district has told us.
Right.
They had it proposed at a different location at one time and now they've moved over to this location and we're like, still triggers it. And so.
So do we know where the fire station would be?
Not yet. They'll have to work those location and those things out as part of getting, going through this approval. And then once they find the location and the design of that, then that will come before you in the design.
And will Outer Mountain paying for that entire facility debt? But not, I assume not the ongoing operating cost or the additional.
Right.
Cost burden to the fires.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be absorbed by the entire community.
Right. Well, and right now we have some, um, different, um, AVA stuff in that area. And those are things that could be looked at as part of their fees that they have up in that area.
Right now the fire district currently serves Power Mountain. So we're already providing. Service. They're just providing a station, another truck or whatever.
Correct. Are they providing the truck or just the station?
Well, that's a problem too, that we're working with the fire district on is. They would be providing a truck up in that area, but that's something they're working on financially to make sure that they, they have that available. And those are things that, um, were in close contact with the fire district about right then.
All that information, it would seem to me would need to be on the table before a final.
Not for, um, this, this would be more of a condition that you would look at putting that on there. And then once before they can go in further with this, that condition would have to come back. And you guys would have to address the location and the design of that, but not how the fire station is managed and operated. That's out of your code view. So as far as how many trucks they need up there, how many man may be out there. Um, you know, the cost of that, that's out of your code view, but as smart as the location, the design of it, that's definitely within your basis.
The parking spaces that are mentioned in here seem really minimal. Is that something that is just a? Like written ordinance that they just follow or is this?
So this is discussion. So the, what's interesting is our ordinance outlines a minimum number of parking spaces based on use. It does not, however, address a minimum number of parking spaces for a ski resort. Um, so a traffic study was submitted with this application, uh, by a third party. They reviewed peak. Traffic times, which are typically president's day weekend. They were actually up on site. And they looked at the minimum spaces needed. They also took into account in their traffic study. Sections from our ordinance that outlined other uses like the cafe. The bar, some of the other amenities and the minimum number of spaces, the gear rental shop, that retail space, and they included those in their calculation. So that's where that number comes from. Now, engineering is concerned with that number. With the number of spaces and what they would like to see is they'd like to see a site plan. With the parking spaces labeled as to use. Show us how many you've got and exactly which ones would be for retail, which ones would be for this. So they'd like to see it broken out just so it's easier to read and possibly easier for them to determine. If they have enough parking.
It seems really minimal. Um, and I don't know, does that? Is this in any way something that we can have? Any influence on or it is like saying we'd like. Ten more spaces or, you know, I guess that's arbitrary, but you know what I mean? Uh, because. I mean, especially this season, that, you know, Hidden Lake Parking Lot has been. All the way back to the road every day, whether it was a Tuesday or a Friday.
Right.
I can't imagine them having a hotel, a bar, a cafe. A playground and everything else and a ski resort. I know that it's not going to be that way. In mud season, uh, but the hotel probably won't be very full at that point either. Um, it just seemed really small in terms of, even for a hotel, half a spot. Per room, like.
Right. So one spot for every two rooms.
Well, and those are things that are definitely within your code view and, you know. For instance, one thing they did when they were looking at the, um, heliport, not heliport, but, uh, yeah, up there. Is that they says, okay, we have this area down on the valley floor where we're gonna park our guests and we're gonna shuttle them up. And so based upon that, that was part of their parking plan agreement. And so those are things that we can look at, um, to accommodate for the parking, but then has to be an ongoing type thing.
But are you talking about the parking lot that's over behind like? By the four way? Are you talking about there wasn't, they had a plan. They wanted to do the old barn as a parking lot, which that didn't get approved, I thought. Right. So.
Yeah. And so. That was based upon that area and then so they had to come up with something else to accommodate for that. And they could do something like that, or they could look at, um, we have something at, um, Rainbow Gardens and then we shuttle people up from there. And for, um, one thing we're working with Snow Basin on is we're trying to say, hey, Snow Basin. We got a parking issue. Why don't you start working with UTA? And so they're working with UTA and possibly looking at something like at the front counter station. And front runner owns some of the land to the north of there that's vacant. Why don't you look at developing that, working with UCA so that they can park there and then create a shuttle up. From there so that it reduces the traffic through the canyon and that way we have less of an impact on the environment and the people.
Right. But if this is our one shot to look at this, I think that's what I heard. And that's all a little bit of, um, discussion that isn't nailed down. Wouldn't they want to see that they've nailed things down?
That's why I'm throwing these options back there because those are things you can look at.
Okay.
So this says that this traffic study calls out the county's parking requirement. Which is, I guess, basically, say, when the counties would.
That is the, the only thing in here that doesn't come from county ordinance is the number of stalls required for the ski resort for that use. Specifically.
And there is no.
When reality, their meeting is required.
Right.
Yes, there, oh, I, I hear that, that they're not. You know, doing anything outside of the ordinance, but that's why I was asking, is it within our ability to ask for more? And I, I think you guys said yes.
You possibly could. If you see an issue up there and even if they are meeting the ordinance, you could say, well. How is the resort's not functioning properly because we already have a traffic crossing up there right now? Um, and so those are things that you can say, we need more study done and. If there's issues in the trap, well, was there issues in the traffic study?
No, that's just it. We didn't have ordinance to dispute the traffic study.
So that could be an area where our hands are somewhat tied.
There's no ordinance on ski resorts. Right? In terms of their parking.
Right.
At all.
Right.
So it was hard to tell, but it looks like for their hotel and such parking, they just took spots out of this. They didn't expand the parking at all. They're going to pave it and say so many are allocated to the new development.
Right. And that's engineering's concern. That was specifically why they wanted to see those parking areas delineated.
And they don't show parking anymore going.
Going down the access. Right.
Now, would that be? No longer permitted per.
No. Um, what the county won't allow is them parking down on the main road. They want zero parking there. When I talked to engineering about the access road, they said they can park there. They wanted to, but it is not shown on their parking plan.
So and then one of them, I thought I saw. Part that access road label, there's a, a road, but. The road that stops at the county road and then that access road is part of their parking lot.
Correct. The county engineers, however, will require that that road be paved, given the additional impact. Yeah, with this approval, they have to pave both the parking lot. Our code requires a hard surface for parking lots and county engineers.
Hotel?
Yes.
Or for the whole thing?
The whole thing. That entire parking lot has to be paved.
If they're gonna use it for the hotel. Is that what you're saying?
So right now.
Paved now, but if our county ordinance says it needs to be paved. What's true in the hotel?
The application, the new application. So this may have been approved back before we had a parking ordinance that required that. And every time we get a new application, we try to bring properties into compliance and this is part of that.
And they know that. Where it had to be hard surface doesn't have to actually be paved.
That was Nordic.
That's not applicable to this.
We want to address that. And when our engineering division has concern about the traffic study saying something else. That's where you could make a condition that the developer work with their engineering division to address their concerns.
And a couple, the, just on page four out of fifteen. It was capitalized the ridge development areas under the second consideration relating to fire development. Is that just mentioning? The area that the hotel's going, it just gets confusing. The development, the ridge that's down. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Powder Mountain has their areas divided up and they've named each area just for.
Okay.
Ease and this, this area is called the.
Okay.
Very easy. They've got a junk ball area as well.
Right. Not to be confused with the other application that is completely separate under a different.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't. Okay. And then, and so. Did, in terms of hotel and sub development rights, does it pull from their development rights or because this is a commercial product? Like, how does this work with them putting? Sixty-three. Hotel rooms, whether they're cabins or rooms.
So I'm gonna have Charlie pipe in at a moment because he's much more familiar with this, but my understanding is that when you're doing developments like that, the, you need to shuffle. Development rights into that area. In order to do some of these commercial developments. Now, in their master plan. in order to do some of these commercial developments. Now, in their master plan, this is slated as a mixed-use commercial development area. So they're meeting their master plan development, but as far as where the density comes from, Charlie, maybe you have more detail on that.
So they got their, they got their bucket, they got their pot of rights and uh one lockout unit is worth uh, it's a third of the unit. So three lockout units is worth one unit. So as they look at putting more lockout units in, the more they go up, the less units they have overall.
But what do you mean by lockout unit?
So you've got uh your main unit, which will have a kitchen, bathroom, living areas.
You have at the hotel. So the cat, they have two types of cabin, maybe I'm just in my.
Maybe I'm just thinking of the cabins then.
Okay.
Uh, if they give the amendment to the development.
I didn't see that in here with kitchen facilities and such. Is that in here? Well, so I think what you're trying to say is like, think of a hotel. Every hotel has a kitchen, but they they might have a restaurant in the basement.
Right.
So one hotel room is equivalent to one third of it, because like a hotel needs a lockout.
That's right. That's right. They might have a hot plate in it or something.
So then the cabins might be a full development, right? Because they're also a full house, just a small one, right?
They're just a bedroom and a bathroom. That's all that's in these cabins.
Oh.
Maybe a closet to store.
The intention of it is a short term. I don't think it's considered.
Okay.
Right.
But so they have their own bucket of development rights and this is coming from that, is the answer to my question. That this isn't pulling from the floor. This is just, they already have their bucket.
No, and nor can we pull from the floor to
um, we we cannot.
No, we can't. No, we can't pull from the floor there. We can't go from there down.
Okay, that makes sense. I would think we could go up. Okay. But they have their own. Got it.
And we track those, just so you're aware. We track that bank of development rights and every time something is planted, we're keeping track of that number and how it changes through development.
Which, when you go to put that, you would clearly identify what, so freestanding building counts as one versus lockout.
Correct.
Right.
Each of these.
I'm sure there's a definition difference. I don't, I think this would probably fall in that third, but even at that.
Yeah, and we do the same at Wolf Creek um as well.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions?
The intent is for the applicant to still come before tonight and and let us proceed to a certain point and then wait until it all the information is available. Is that?
They're wanting approval tonight on this, but we're we have concerns, yeah.
We gotta make a motion. But they also recommended approval, so.
Well, we recommended approval subject to them meeting every agency's requirements. So whatever engineering comes up with and whatever fire district comes up with, they do have to adhere to every one of those.
They're still gonna have to address engineering's concerns.
Same thing.
Right.
Yeah. So I guess it was kind of back to questions. Why do we haven't finished before we can finally approve this or anything? Either way, if you're comfortable with it.
Well, but still, didn't you recommend this before? They just, they just came to you and said.
This is pretty much the same as what we got, though.
That, so this is, this was received a few weeks ago, about three weeks ago, we got the application in. All of the information in the staff report is based on their original application supplemental about three weeks ago. What they got to us yesterday was an updated site plan that shows something more akin to a barn in lieu of that main building that's going to hold the thirty-three hotel rooms.
So this is not that.
Right, right. And that is what they would. I I think they'd like to be approved for something smaller. I I think they just don't know exactly what they want to do.
But the proposal in front of us in the packet that specifically says will look very similar to the current Sky Lodge that's existing, it's gonna have this Scandinavian thing. Now it's a barn.
Um, how did they put it? They called it a barn and then they said it would match the existing Sky Lodge. What was originally submitted will match materials and style to the existing Sky Lodge, because they will sit side by side on the same site.
During flexibility built into the uh conditions of approval to allow them to switch the buildings out? Would this constitute, like, if they did come in?
So we've passed this tonight.
This is.
That's right. So if they want what they submitted yesterday, they're gonna have to go through a new approval process.
And we intentionally did not build that flexibility in because we haven't had any time to review additional information. So we would like time to review that.
Let's say. One of the main. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I love it when they come in the day before and say, never mind, I want.
I'm not too worried about.
Thank you.
I sometimes my filter isn't exactly positioned.
Yes, we're going to.
She gets a merit badge or something for being here for all this meeting, right?
I'm a mean mom. You'll have about five hours to do it, but you know. Still get it done.
Yeah, at least four hours.
I don't know if we can people out when that's one chunk.
You know what? You could always just move to table. Don't even talk about it.
You preboat it? All right, I'll see you then.
See ya.
Avani, you know, you can go out there this way. You're gonna be an expert at this building.
Excuse me. Is anyone there? Hello? Hello?
If they're meeting the ordinance requirements, then this is something that you're obligated to approve. Um, these are things that we do not open up to public clamor. Um, when we're dealing with legislative items, that is where you can definitely take public comment um into consideration. But when you're dealing with administrative items, if they're meeting the ordinance, then they are required to be approved. So and Miss Hade Laught is going to be presenting both of these items.
Three buildings with four townhomes each. Um, this is located off of Moose Hollow Drive. The roadways within here are private roadways. Um, you've got lot area frontage, you've got some development standards outlined in your staff report. This is the proposed layout. Here's space four. This was shown to you previously as well, but I usually need to see something a few times. So these are your three buildings here. Um, your private roadways off of Moose Hollow Drive. These are the building elevations. Um, the differences in the architectural um, standards being used are not different from phase four. I think phase four was maybe a hair different, but nothing nothing that really deviated from their conditional use approval. Um, these are some of the standards to consider. This one's pretty straightforward, to be honest. They've got water and sewer servicing this. Um, the landscaping plan will be followed. So when they go to submit building permits, we will ask them to show us what their landscaping plan would be. We'll compare it against that twenty thirteen approval and make sure that everything complies. If there's anything that's different, if they want to make any changes, depending on how big those changes are, they may have to come back before you. I don't foresee that. That's not been a discussion from the developer. But generally, that's how that process goes with regards to conditional use approvals. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Think so. Is the applicant here? Would they like to make any comments?
The applicant is here.
Comments from the planning commission? Nope, not hearing any. I'll entertain a motion. Could you speak into the mic, please?
I'd motionally approve file UV T one-one-two-eight. Two-two. Friendly amendment as subject to all the finding and staff.
I have a a motion for approval. Courtland, are we, are we good there? With the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
That would be something that would need to be accepted by the commission and by the maker of the motion. So.
Sounds like he's good and doing, just need a second. We have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, all, the motion is for approval, subject to all the findings in the staff report. Uh, do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the vote is um four to to one and one abstained. Is that correct?
Wampler will abstain.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, who voted no?
We had one abstained from voting. Okay, Commissioner Wampler abstained. All right, and then moving on to item number two, Rick, would you please explain this decision? And I understand it is an administrative decision, but can you explain a little bit about final design review?
You bet.
What's?
So when you're looking at um a design review, you guys are the final approval body on this type of an item. Um, the applicant needs to show that he's meeting the ordinance requirements for this. Uh, they'll be looking at um layout, building design, how it integrates um into the site, and if it meets the ordinance requirements. If you feel comfortable with what has been presented to you, you can approve it. If you have some concerns um with what has been presented to you, you can always table it and ask for additional information to be provided um before you uh make a motion on this. And here again, um it's not open to uh public comment on this. It's more if it's me and the ordinance and your comfort level is what you're looking at when you look at approving this.
Thank you.
Yes, can I?
Yes, please.
All right. Uh, this is a request for approval of a design review for a proposal for Sky Lodge Hotel located at the top of Powder Mountain Road, specifically off of um, let me go back to. There we go, specifically off of Summit Past Road. Can everybody see that one thing? Um, this is an aerial of the existing use on the site. You've got a parking area. It's not paved. Um, I'm not entirely sure if there's gravel up there. Um, but you've got a dirt access road into a parking lot. This is the existing Sky Lodge Hotel. And what is being proposed, and I'll show you a more detailed site plan momentarily here, are thirty standalone cabins that run kind of around the perimeter a little bit. And then another main Sky Lodge Building Hotel to house thirty-three guest rooms. So thirty cabins, thirty-three guest rooms. A variety of uses are being proposed on site, all of which fit into the master development plan that was approved some time ago. Um, let me go back to this presentation here. Yeah. Um, you've got all of this information outlined in your staff report in more detail. But these are some of the proposed amenities and uses. And later on, when we look at the area for parking, um, it addresses many of these that are listed in our code. Um, these are the standards that we typically consider when we're looking at design review applications. We're looking at traffic circulation and safety. We're looking at how many accesses are coming out onto some of these either U dot roads or county roads. And we're looking at access for emergency services in the fire district to be able to get to this property to get in and out. Um, we look at signage. We look at signage. They haven't proposed a signage plan at this phase. However, when they do, they are required to come through planning and adhere to the sign ordinance that we have for Ogden Valley. We look at building and site layout. We look at landscaping. You have in there a couple of prior approvals, and we're looking at engineering concerns like drainage, utility easements, and access. So this is an overall site plan of what's being proposed. This is Summit Pass Road here to orient you, and this is their access road. Powder Ridge Road is what it's labeled. This is their proposed parking area, which I'm not aware that they're necessarily expanding the area. But as they will be required to pave this with hard surface, they will also need to, um, mark out each and every stall. This is the proposed main building here that would house thirty-three additional rooms. The existing Sky Lodge is here, and you've got a few of their amenities. Here's a dog park, a play area, and amphitheater. These are the thirty cabins here. This is a footpath. The idea is to park here and be able to walk to each of these cabins. Now, there's a couple of different types of cabins. And you have those elevations in your staff report. You've got one story, you've got single story, and you've got two-story. And really, the only difference is the two-story has got kind of a loft area up above. It doesn't have an additional bedroom. These are single sleeping rooms with a restroom and possibly a gear storage closet inside. Uh, you can see these four-foot wide kind of soft trails that go to each of these cabins. Um, something I do, let me go back here. Something I do want to point out. Now, the developers had some discussions with Weber Fire District, and as a result of those discussions, they've indicated some emergency access points here. Here, and I believe, I believe this is one as well for EMS to be able to access these cabins. The idea isn't necessarily for fire access, but if they've got to get a patient out of there, that's where they would access from, or that's what they're proposing. Um, something to note, we did not have formal reviews from engineering and fire uploaded into Frontier when the staff report went out to the planning commission. So there's been, so there have been some additional comments that have come in since you've received this staff report and these recommendations. Um, one of them is that engineering actually does not want to see any of these access points along Summit Pass Road. They have asked that the developer work with the fire district to figure out an alternative way to access, and I think they were the, under the impression there would be something that would kind of come right through the middle. Sorry, I keep leaving the slide there. They were looking at something that would come right through the middle, something to be able to get a truck through there, which may or may not work with what the applicant is wanting to see up there. We'll kind of give you another view of that. This is how we look. Here's the parking here. And you can see all these cabins with the trees, the main building with the guest rooms. There is a ski run that runs outside here. It's an existing ski run that comes out on the, onto Powder Ridge Road or Summit Pass Road. Engineering's not wild about that. We're trying to deal with the safety issues with that, but this is just another view of what it would look like, what's being proposed. And this is their landscaping plan. Um, they're proposing mainly to keep native vegetation. So what they'd like to do after they've graded everything out and dropped in these pre-manufactured cabins is they'd like to put in native seed and get it looking the way it was before. So that's what the majority of the landscaping is. It's being proposed, along with a few deciduous and conifer trees in there. And we do have standards in our landscaping code that, um, mandate the minimum size so that they'll take, so we don't end up with a bunch of dead trees in six months. These are the conditions of approval that are in the staff report. Should the planning commission decide to approve this now? I will mention that the applicant has approached us with a few changes. And so they may not be entirely sure of what they'd like to commit to at this time. And it certainly is within the planning commission's purview to table this until they see something more finalized. The other option is to, to give this approval, but subject to all review agency requirements, especially engineering and fires. They've got to work all of that out. We may issue a written notice of decision. However, they won't receive formal approval until they have adhered to every single condition from every affected county agency. So this is pretty much hitting a nutshell. Sixty-six hotel rooms, some various amenities, a cafe, bar, amphitheater. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I have a question running from Rick Courtland. Your number three says unless otherwise allowed by the planning commission, the entirety of the Sky Lodge parking lot will be required to be hard surface paved. Is that, isn't that part of our code? Or is that, is that something we would make an exception to? Is that what?
There is a possibility in this area to do an exception to that. But you'd have to be complying fully with the ordinance. And maybe I can address that a little more. The, excuse me, the code section that is referred to in the staff report where see. It's on the page that talks about consideration relating to traffic safety and traffic congestion. It does talk about in this zone at that elevation where a master plan has been approved. The land use authority may modify the applicability of any provision of this chapter by approving a parking plan created by the developer if the land use authority determines that the plan is consistent with the approved master plan. So. And then that shall include provisions applying sufficient mitigation for parking and provide a mechanism for revocation when the plan is not operating as presented. So you do have that flexibility.
It may be elaborate on that. Does the plan require that it needs to be asphalt? In order to we have flexibility?
That would typically be a requirement of the code, but this is saying you can vary from the code. You can depart from the code if there is a master plan in place, and that would be a question to take a look at. Is this consistent with the approved master plan? And that would be a question for planning staff, I guess, to guide you in the right direction as far as what that master plan indicates.
That's a great question. Is not having asphalt consistent with the master plan?
Well, in some of our mountain resort areas, we have done some exceptions to that. Um, if we have certain compaction levels being satisfied. Oftentimes, in those situations, we rely on the fire district to make sure that the compaction levels are meeting their requirements, um, in these mountainous areas. Typically, our ordinance is more cut and dry when we're doing development, say, for instance, on the valley floor. But in this area, there are some exceptions that you could look at, um, if you so chose to.
What's the recommendation of the planning staff on the pavement?
Planning staff is recommending that all review agency requirements are adhered to, and county engineering is asking that that be hard surfaced along with the access.
Hard surfaced or paved?
I believe they said paved.
It's the entire parking?
The entire parking lot and the access road down the Summit Pass Road.
Currently, right now, there's not a parking lot up there paved.
It's not paved. It is being used as a parking lot. There is a parking lot up there, but it is not paved.
But there's two other parking lots, I believe, that are not paved. Correct?
Yes.
That's the question, right? So is it, since we're making, one thing that was mentioned was that we're making adjustments. Does that retroactively make all the rest of the parking that's needed to be paid too?
No, but I, are you referencing sundown condos? Is that what you had mentioned?
The other parking lots.
Oh, um, when an applicant, when another application is submitted, that's typically when we look at that. Um, sundown condos is not part of Summit, but it is an unpaved access road and parking area, and that's actually in the process of becoming a paved roadway through there. Because we've received a development application from the owner, so we're requiring that at this time.
So does, so I guess, so the question becomes if, if, are they required to pave the roads, the, the parking lots that are going to be used for the right, the fifty-five units that's minimum per the and if that's the case, that's for the code. I, is that the code or do we have latitude?
You have latitude, but in this instance, like Tammy's mentioned, we're going off of what engineering has recommended and where they're recommending the access road and then the parking area for this required parking stalls for this development. Then that's what you'd be approving based upon staff's, um, recommendation, because they're recommending that the service provider conditions be satisfied.
So if we approve tonight based on, say, engineering and fires requirements, not knowing what those fully are, this is not, is that correct?
Yep.
We, they, they could be subject to having to pave the entire parking. We, as a planning commission, we may or may not think that's justifiable requirement, the whole thing. But if they, if the engineering department says, yeah, I know we want them to, then they would have to.
Yeah. And if you don't feel comfortable with that and you want more detailed information, you could say I, we would like to have this tabled until you can come back and address those things with the engineering division's recommendation fully, um, you know, spelled out to your comfort level. You know, that's well within your purview. Any other comments? Is the applicant here and would they like to make some comments?
Evening. Um, thanks, Tammy, for that. Uh, Laren Turley with Lodge Camps. So just to kind of give some clarity, there are a couple of parties to this project. Uh, Lodge Camps is the developer and would be the operator of the hotel. Uh, Powder Mountain is not present. Um, so there is some discussion about that parking lot and the master development agreement that they have with the master plan that probably has to be uh, including Powder Mountain. That makes sense. Our project specifically is for the expansion adjacent to the Sky Lodge, um, which is really the homeowner's kind of lounge, um, area. So our project would be the expansion to that or adjacent to that with the cabins and the hotel. I think Powder Mountain would have to respond directly about the parking lot because it has other uses. It's not just for this property. It's also for uh, hidden lakes, lodges, I understand it, and skier, day skier parking and all of that, right?
So. But you're, you're proposing to use that parking lot for your
portion of that.
So you're saying you guys own the ground and powder is separate and it's all one?
It's all one parcel today, um, as I understand it, and Powder would be allocating a number of stalls required for the hotel use. But it wouldn't be the whole parking lot. So that's what I was trying to explain. There's kind of two entities that would have to look at this together, and I would want, I don't want to speak for Powder. They need to, uh, respond about the comments, um, as it relates to the master plan. Uh, and what they, you know, want to do, uh, as far as responding to engineering, if that makes sense. I think that portion could be tabled. Tammy did reference, uh, some potential, um, reduction or changes to the, to the hotel that we're still going back and forth a little bit about the main building. Um, that potentially would be a phased approach, could be a phased approach. Uh, but it could also be just a reduction in the size of the main building. And so, um, if it was kind of our request tonight would be the cabins we would like to proceed with as is. And we'd like to come back to you next month with, uh, a final plan for the main hotel with also the fire and engineering kind of worked out. Um, but the cabins, as they sit on that kind of loft, we would like to proceed with that, if, if that makes sense. Uh, but come back next month with the main hotel. Uh, at that point, we, I'm sure we could address the, the parking lot as well. So kind of some moving parts there, but wanted to put that out there because, uh, for clarity and for your benefit.
Thank you. Any questions for that?
As part of this, um, landscaping or re-landscaping. Are you familiar? Have you been up there in the summer?
I have.
So you've seen that there's a lot of raw, there are ground up there where it's been disturbed and not restored over the years. Why, why would you, I mean, why would we think you're going to restore this when they haven't restored most of what's been disturbed yet?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, I can't speak to what Powder Mountain has done in the past. Um, I haven't been involved. But going forward, our intention is to operate this year round. And so there is a benefit to us as the operator and as the hotel brand to have, um, you know, an attractive landscape. And so that's what we're trying to propose, um, which is probably different from what you're seeing today.
But it's difficult to restore. There it takes, what they've done, and I know they've tried, but it hasn't worked. So what? Why would we think you can do it and they couldn't? I know you said you want to operate here around, but they operate here today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think for our benefit, we would cede what's been disturbed, including what's existing and not re-drawn. And our intention is to have it be kind of a, a natural landscape. Hopefully it takes. I mean, we are at a very high elevation, a lot of wind. But our intention is to cede it so that it does take and there is some landscaping that can be throughout the, or throughout the summer.
Thank you.
Trees to be planted, be irrigated.
Um, we're really not proposing a lot of trees. There are a kind of select few, um, along that loft. And I don't know if it's worth showing the site plan again, but yeah, yeah, that's fine. Most of what you're seeing is existing. Uh, most of those are Aspen, um, kind of along that block. And so what we are proposing is to insert these cabins within that tree. Um, and then to try not to disturb, you know, we really like the natural aesthetic.
Some of the pictures in the, in the submittals were fairly minimal. It's like, it's just kind of going.
Yeah. Yep.
Discussion in the packet about deciduous trees and a variety of trees that had to be a certain height. I mean, there was discussion about putting in.
Yeah, can I just go back to the main? So, uh, as you can see, kind of top of page, there are some new or proposed trees. It's hard to, I mean, decide or decipher which one's which. But I, I kind of against the proposed hotel building, there would be some new trees, in which case, yes, we would want to, um, coordinate those so that they do take.
So you're saying if we were to separate out the cabins, so kind of as far as this packet goes, it's a little bit of a piecing apart in this. So, so you're saying as to his question about trees, for what you now want to pull apart just the cabins, you wouldn't be bringing in trees because you wouldn't be disturbing the current? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's what I understand. Yeah, I was just looking back to our architect. Um, but yeah, that's, that, that is my understanding of the site plans. It's very limited, um, uh, removal of trees in the cabin location and replacement of native vegetation for any disturbance in that area. And then that's phase one. Phase two would be some additional trees and landscaping to help buffer against the main hotel building, uh, which you can see kind of at the top of the page there.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any other questions or clarification?
Yes, I do. Um, me, it would be extremely difficult to separate this out because we can't really approve one thing without engineering and fire to say, well, we're good, but likely approve a design of the cabins and not. Is that correct? Is that even really feasible? I'm sure we could somehow do it.
Yeah, this is a new, um, element to staff. I'm not aware of this being separated out and proposed.
Not with the application. You mean, have we previously phased design reviews?
Well, no, we have phased design reviews, but on this one, they haven't talked about that until just now. Is that?
This is new. There was a little bit of discussion late last week, but it was well after information went out to the planning commission. And where we don't have a site plan that maybe shows that phasing, we've only been able to review the entire plan that's been submitted.
Yeah, I think that might be a little difficult to do that at this stage of the game.
Some, so some of the, if I heard the applicant correctly, he would like to kind of push to next month after having some work with that. Is that kind of what I heard?
Okay.
Good. Do we have any input or comments for the, um, applicant that we'd like thing to help in their, their venture?
I do. Um, this is obviously all my comments are going to be based off of what I've read and learned from the current proposal, which, as you mentioned, might not be um, still valid, but just to take into account, um, I have concerns about the parking spaces. I know you also said that that kind of isn't your purview and that the Powder Mountain side of things aren't here, but if you might want to take notes. Um, I understand that these numbers were pulled from county ordinances. I, I also understand that it's there's a missing ordinance. There's, there isn't an ordinance about the ski resort itself, and so I'm concerned about the amount of parking for that's been allocated to this resort or this hotel, I should say. Um, directly coming from the existing parking. Um, directly coming from the existing parking. Um, each year Powder Mountain grows and grows in popularity. And this year alone, that parking lot has been out spilling into the street and so on and so forth. Um. I, I, I would like to see, basically, let me just get to what I'd like to, I'd like to see more parking allocated. Uh, rather than subtracting out of the existing, I'd like to see something added so that the hotel can have its parking and the ski resort can continue having its parking rather than having to, to subtract.
I might add a little bit on that. So the parking itself, some of my concerns is that we would force the paving on that. That's a pretty big expense. Although it's a nice thing, that's, we, I, I'd prefer to leave that up to you and your purview of what you decide is nice to offer your guests. Um, and as you look at that, you know, you might be able to come up with something between Powder Mountain and yourself. Because we, we definitely want to make sure that the parking is addressed, whether it be that because of the additional growth of the hotel and the current situation. And I think that's, I think that's a good point is to, let's, let's take a closer.
Yeah, a question just, I guess I would put this under the the banner of public safety. If somebody was staying down in one of the furthest away avenues. Will they get? Either the parking lot? Skiler or to the main building?
Yeah, no, no, that's, well, actually.
Yeah, because the people online.
Yeah, this is a, this is a very unique site, um, and, and Powder Mountain is a very unique ski resort in the country. Um, uh, so the intention is that these are, um, what I would call backcountry cabins. Um, they are meant to be ski in, ski out. They're meant to be hiked to. Um, we potentially would have a, a cat service, no cat service that could take you to the cabin or pick you up from the cabin. Uh, but most of these guests would be, uh, arriving by, uh, skis, snowshoe or hiking. That is, that's kind of the intention, um, which is why the parking is, is what it is today. We'd have a main building which solves a lot of, um, other needs for, for our guests. And then there are these kind of, uh, more removed or isolated cabins in, in the trees.
So that's a down slope there.
It is correct. Yeah, it slopes, uh, east to west.
The pathways I saw defined as working.
Yeah, I think that's the intention. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. I'm not hearing any other questions or comments. I will entertain a motion.
I would motion, we tabled this, um, till the full correct proposal is proposed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion to table until, um, entities, including engineering and fire have, have a chance to review and some of the designs have been, uh, fi- for finalized. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like the vote is, any, any opposed? Not hearing. Okay, with that, we'll move right along. We don't have any legislative items tonight, so we'll move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Um, if I see a group here tonight, um, if you have comments, please feel free to share. We'd, uh, love to hear from you. Please state your name, where you're from and, uh, or name and your address or where you're from, I guess. And then, uh, um, please keep it to around two minutes if you can. Uh, to be, if you've got comments for items on the work session, we, we'd love to hear it. Um, or you're welcome to hang around for that after the, after this. Uh, we'll go online. Looks like, uh, Jan Fulmer.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, just something really quick. I know I've given you a lot of data on how many short-term rental legal areas for short-term rentals, how many dwelling units there are available in the valley right now, which is about twenty per, twenty-six percent. There right now are plans approved. I think for about five hundred more, when you look at the build out of the ridge, also the buildup of, build out of the bridges. I just ask that you seriously consider when development plans come up before you, where you've got the FR three for multifamily dwelling or condos or commercial, whatever. Please, please try to restrict and maybe not approve short-term rentals. We have enough in this valley. We really do. That's all I want to say tonight, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. No, just come on up. Yeah.
Okay, my name's Talia Matheson. I live in Eden. Just, um, do you need my address or just?
That's fine.
Um, I am here to just kind of give some public comment on one of the workshops. I think that's number number two, and also an upcoming workshop that could be in the future that I know is a development that's coming up. Um, I live right in Eden, within a quarter of a mile of both of these issues. And I'm not opposed to development commercially or residentially, but I'm opposed to not smart development. So you, you probably have heard about my house. A week and a half ago, um, the county drainage ditch overflowed and cost me thousands and thousands of dollars because a river ran right into my home. And the development in question that I want to talk about is the Sunnyfield Farm Development, where they're taking some of their shares from Sunnyfield Farm and mitigating them over to, I think it's called the Frower subdivision. I don't know. I call it Eden Acres, but they're adding to that. And I'm really concerned. And I, I wanted to kind of pose the question is what are you going to be doing with storm water, stormwater drainage in that area? And how are you going to protect the homes that are there? My neighborhood that I'm in, I'm in Sand Hill Crane, and I'm a little bit embarrassed that that got approved. Because when that got approved, it just pushed the water issues down the road and flooded other people's homes. And now all of these developments ahead of us are doing the same thing and are coming into existing homes. So I think that that's something you really, really need to consider because what is currently there, you can't just dump water into the Lindsay ditch. It's already overflowing. And so is the drainage ditch just to the south of my home. It's already at max capacity. As soon as that sun starts hitting that snow, we're going to have some big trouble. So I'm a little bit worried about that. I'm worried about adding more homes in that area than you should, um, because it's already a swamp land and um, the more, you know, concrete that you put in that area, the less land can like soak up any water that is going to happen. I'm a little bit worried about, um, them moving their, their building. Um, permit, I talked to the developer before this meeting and he said that you guys are trying to say, you know, if, if we give Sunnyfield Farms access to be able to move over their development process over to that neighborhood so that they're like a protected farm, which I'm all for protecting that farm. But is that a really a permanent fix? Is that going to be something that you can never develop on? Or in ten years down the road, if they decide to sell, are people going to be able to, a developer to be able to grab it and say, oh, it's agricultural. Now I'm going to subdivide? That's a question I would like addressed. Um, and then the other issue that I have is the commercial property that's across from Carlos and Harney's. I understand that's workshop two that you're going to have tonight with the developer trying to change the height restrictions on homes in Eden. Um, I think if you took a, a survey of everybody that lived up in the Ogden Valley, there would not be one person up there that wants taller buildings. Because everybody moved up there probably for the peace and the beauty and that. So if that's really happening, I want to, you know, I'm opposed to that. And I would like to know why that would even be in consideration. Um, and high density homes. And my other, actually my other question too about the Sunnyfield Farms one is just to make sure that but I understand the developer only wants fifteen lots. Um, but I think that there was some talk with the county commissioners about trying to remove the workhouse. Is that the right word? The workhouse housing out of it so that it would be the lower income, more high density in that area? And I think the county commissioners, from what I understand from the developer are on board with that, but um, I would like to see that kind of in writing with like a permanent for sure, that this is only going to be six, fifteen lots versus more. So I, if you could address those questions, I would love it. Um, obviously I'm super invested because I don't want to be spending thousands and thousands of dollars every spring.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, Rich Love, I live in Eden, twenty-four eighteen north, fifty-six hundred east. I'm right across the road from where the, the new development that you're considering or the, the, the county's considering. Um, I've lived there long enough to know that there's, is a severe flooding problem that comes down through that ground. I've seen two feet of water flow through that entire piece of property and form a lake. You know, by where that subdivision is. So I, I want to second what Talia had to say. And also on, on the, um, the increasing the height of the buildings. I understand that so they can put some commercial units on the ground floor and then put some living apartments or condos or whatever going up from that. And, um, I, I feel like in doing those kinds of things, they're taking away from what the valley is and what people are moving there for. And I realize that there'll be all kinds of people that'll want to move there and live in those condos or the, the multifamily housing and stuff that's being proposed. But I wonder if it's going to ruin what the valley is. We've got so much going on and so many developments that are already started that they're working on that's going to increase the traffic. I don't know if you've, um, talked to the sheriff's department about the increase in law enforcement that we're going to need with all this development. Talked to the fire chief about all the increased fire stuff that it's going to take to be able to service those people. And I don't think they have really much up in the valley as far as stormwater um, containment and, and work on that. And I just hate to see all of that water just flow down through the subdivisions and down the roads and everything without any stormwater or any plans for stormwater that I'm aware of. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
I would like to say something. Can you hear me? Hello?
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll go online to Jacqueline Il- Ilgith?
Yes.
Say that correctly?
Correctly. Yes, that's correct. I, first of all, I want to second what Rich Love and Talia had to say about their homes in this valley. But you know, I live in Eden Acres and right now there is a river running down my street. A river of water that's coming through two properties that were zoned to have, um, a home built on them, but they are literally swamp ground right now. And the pasture next to me that you want to change the zoning on, that has a lot of water in it. And, um, if you put homes in that area, they're going to flood. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the infrastructure in this valley. I mean, to get people to come up this valley already, they have to come up either Ogden Canyon, over the divide or over, over trappers. Anyway, um, the roads aren't built for that much traffic. And you've got to take that into consideration. Also, last year and the year before that, we didn't get very much snow. And so we were put on water rations. And if you put homes in this area, I would like to know where they're going to get their water. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Teresa Bramwell. I own a property in Ogden Canyon. And I visited the Wasatch Front Regional Council Meeting last week and have been doing some research online about their plans for, uh, the Wasatch Front. And there will be a trail, a, a trail coming up Ogden Canyon very soon. Um, it's going to pass right by my property on either one side or the other. I don't know which yet because I've been trying for six months to find a map, but that doesn't exist yet. I know Weber County just funded it. But we still haven't seen a map. I'm just curious where all these thousands of people that are going to be taking this trail from Ogden up to Ogden Valley. Where are these people going to poop? Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Not hearing any comments from the public. We'll go ahead and move to, uh, remarks from the planning commissioners. Do we have any remarks?
I've, I've got a quick question. I, I've missed the last meeting. Um, did we, I, it seemed like when I went to recuse myself, did we, um, pass adjusted rules? Is that?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, we'll get you, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Let's, uh, go to the planning director report. And Rick, I do have a question. Um, those items that we, that were removed from, it sounds like some of them are being asked about public, what? So, so I know tonight in the work section, some of that is related to what they're talking, for example, the transfer. Workforce housing, that kind of thing is in some of the work that's in. Session, correct. From the public who's not familiar with what we're doing, what, what's happened? What are we, what are we doing there? Late to, uh, those, those, uh, sunny fill of this. Form-based. Yeah, so there. Not a little bit. So they might not know what, what's kind of happening. They can either be prepared to participate in that event or. For sure. Um, in the last meeting we had, we talked about, um, the ordinance and the form-based code. And some of the things we, um, discussed is looking at moderate income housing and how we address that. And so that's one thing that's being looked at, um, in this ordinance. We also talked a little bit about height and how we handle that in the form-based code. And so that'd be some things that will be discussed there. Um, when some of the public ask some questions about stormwater drainage and things like that. Those are things that are looked more in detail when we get into the subdivision level, um, of a development. Not at the rezon stage of that. And so they have to meet certain engineering requirements and go through and meet those specifications in order to develop in those areas. And so those are things that we take very seriously and are very concerned about, um, water as well. So they'll have to address those issues, um, at that time. Also, we are making some modifications, um, in the plan too, based upon, um, Western Weber. Um, they're looking at, uh, foreign-based area village out in their community. And that's what spurred a lot of this is based upon some of the changes that they would like to have made in their area. And so as we looked at that, there were some changes. We're like, well, it'd probably be good to jump in and make some modifications to the form-based area up in the Ogden Valley. So we address those both at the same time. As you know, we have a bit of a unique situation with, um, the two planning commissions in Weber County. And so when there's a change made in one, then we have to take it to the other planning commission to get their approval on it. And so, um, it has to go back and forth, um, sometimes. And that's what's happening in this instance, um, with some of these things.
Rick, could you explain why that is? Because I month ago, I, I never even heard of, I don't even know where Western ever been and why Ogden Valley being so vastly different. Unity with so many differences. Western Weaver, why do the two have to be synced at all?
Um, because they have chosen to have a shared code. Uh, the county commission, um, has chosen to have a shared land use code. And, but, and they've also chosen to have two separate planning commissions. Um, they could choose to just combine the planning commissions together and have one planning commission. But, um, the Western Weaver folks and the Ogden Valley folks feel that there's enough difference in those areas to have two separate planning commissions. Um, and so at the present time, we have two planning commissions that we have to work with, but we have one land use code that we're working under. And so when there's a change made to one land use code because they work together, we have. And so when there's a change made to one land use code because they work together, we have to give both planning commissions to approve those.
What if something that Western Weaver wants to do makes no sense whatsoever?
Then we take that to the county commission and they make a determination based upon that.
They want like they do that separately.
Correct.
This planning commission.
Correct.
There's still a lot of
For sure. And there's different, and there's a totally different um land use maps um for those areas and how they relate. And there are certain specifications in the land use code that deal more with the valley regulations as opposed to out west when we're dealing with like the forest valley zones and how development happens in that area versus what happens in agriculture, A1 zones out west. And so there's there's different elements that apply um similar to when you go up to um Summit County. You have the Snyderville Basin. They have a planning commission there and then they have one um out in the the county area. And so not most counties have two planning commissions, but in this instance, there are enough differences differences that they have chosen to have two separate planning commissions. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Following up, if resident wanting to make comments on this based village on that is we're making some adjustments that apply to the Ogden. What should I be looking for in the notification?
So definitely keep an eye on the agendas that are coming up. Um in the work session items, typically we don't have a lot of public comment, but um eventually it will reach to a stage where we have public hearings. And at those stages, that's when the public comment and that is taken um into the record and into a lot more consideration as we look at um how you make a recommendation on that legislative item. Where you're making or you're forwarding a recommendation to the county commission on what you would like to see happen. So best thing to do is keep an eye on the planning commission agendas as they come up. And when you see public hearings identified um on there, that's where the public would want to be in attendance to those meetings um to make their comments.
Following up on that, we have talked. So for example, if you were to read this and see regarding proposed form-based Western West Weber Village area amendments. We're going to be more clear. Is that correct? So in the future, if we're gonna make anything that adjusts that makes Western or the Ogden Valley, we're gonna specifically put that in announcements.
Yeah, it it could be more clear, but the majority of this is dealing with Western Weber. Um but the changes they made
Small ones are important to some.
For sure.
So I want to, I just want to make sure make to do a better job and know, hey, this isn't just Western.
Yeah.
This affects you and you should pay attention.
Yeah. And that's something we talked about in the chair and vice chair meeting a few days ago.
Yeah, and uh just just letting everyone know that we're planning to be better.
Correct. Yep, thank you.
But also, um as people are in attendance or if they want to stay and listen both online and in person to the work sessions while they aren't necessarily permitted to make public comment at the time. If I'm not mistaken, they are more than welcome to email their thoughts, opinions and voice to the planning staff and the planning staff does forward those emails on to us. Regardless of them not being able to speak live in the meeting.
If they have comments, we can take some.
Yes, but I'm I just wanted
Yes, depends on time.
I wanted to make clear that it it doesn't they it's not that they can't and they can always voice, no matter what. They can always send emails and the emails do get sent to us.
Yes.
It just might be a a slight delay in time.
Correct. And that's one reason why we and we've always, as a planning commission, we've tried to keep this Zoom link open. And that's probably one of the best benefits since came from COVID. Um is that we're able to now have, you know, communication with the public um where they're sitting in their home and able to um view these meetings.
Keep that meeting for us in the planning.
No, there hasn't been a lot of things that have went through on the county commission site to update on. Um one thing I do want to update you on is that um we will be going, the planners um will be going to a national planning conference um this weekend. And so on Tuesday at the work session meeting, I won't be there, but Charlie will be there. Um then he'll handle the meeting.
We have any remarks from legal?
Nope, not tonight.
With that, we'll adjourn.
I have a small question. Can I share the screen?
Well, yeah. Charlie can probably help you with that. Are you on the Zoom?
I was.
There's no paper in the package.
Yeah, this is be just a kind of a quick
I'm sorry?
The candy bag.
Oh, you gotta take look uh Are we up and running?
So is Eric there? Says you're in.
Right, yeah.
We need to close those.
Yeah, they will announce it. Start start the video. Please start the video.
Anyway, just wanted to circle around and give you guys an update on Osprey. And the infrastructure that's going in now. And then I think John wanted to maybe address you guys as well, and then we could take questions after that. Again, I'm just gonna go with this pretty quick, but and it's kind of a long run here, but on the very south side is Osprey. You see that? This is where Osprey connects into that line. And there's a lift station down there. And then the idea is to run the line along the work your way to the four-way spot down here. And then you head east. And I think that's uh twenty-five hundred there. And then head north to private property and work your way back up. To Wolf Creek. So part of the condition of the approval was the wastewater had to get back to um so I guess just real quickly on how we figured out this alignment. You know, we worked with UDOT and see where we could be in their right away in certain areas, but there's other areas where there's a lot of conflict with other utilities. Um so it kind of pushed the alignment east and then we were able to come up and get easements in private property. And we're going back. And as you know, construction is going. We've been trying to work through the winter, which has been difficult. How none of the improvements have been in asphalt at all. There is that section here to be twenty-five hundred, which will happen when weather gets better. But crossing the river is completely boring down in the north fork. And then this line right here through the private property is pretty much installed. And this is getting ready to be laid here. And then there'll be some boring, really sensitive area to get back to the the treatment facility.
You said it has been installed of the property.
Down here, yes, through this section here. There is a big staging area up here. All you've seen.
I've seen the blue plaques later.
Yeah. So in addition to the sewer working its way back to Wolf Creek, there is down here some wells that are being developed. Which will bring both secondary and culinary water back up this direction as well.
Will those wells be used for areas?
Um for other than Osprey. These wells right here are not for Osprey. They they work their way back up to the resort. It's kind of a complicated agreement, but now Osprey is serviced by Northern Knott's Water. Okay. That's all I really I know John won there.
All right, Commissioners. Hi, John. Pleasure to be back. Yeah, nostalgic for me. You might might pass out a couple of credits for you guys.
Yeah.
Charlie, you recognize some of this?
But truly what happened there is more
Okay, so I thought I would just briefly kind of start at thirty thousand feet. Uh this this map here is what uh the county kind of provided back in two fourteen to the fifteen. I affectionately call it the measles map. So this is basically, uh you know, the the county's brief concept is is not very precise, but this is what approximately ninety-five hundred more things look like if you build it out. So if we build everything out, this is roughly what it would look like. And without getting into the, you know, well, what if it's a little bit more here and there? You could obviously have a mess if we build it out every three acres and everyone just does everything straight across. So, you know, we we spent years as a community to develop the general plan. And I wanted to to touch on like just a couple of points that are in the general plan, right? A lot of people, we all very much work at the bound and and want to keep this rural feeling as possible. That's the number one goal. So from that, first of all, other than maybe workforce housing or some arguable stuff, never give a bonus. Developers do not need additional stuff, okay? That's the number one thing. So capital of what people's rights are, but we as a valley voted, we don't want to take people's rights away, but let's be responsible about how we place these. So you start off with the measles map. And and you know, the general plan on page sixteen, for instance, says land use principle one point five encourage new development of locating areas where water and sewer service could be provided by a sewer system. So if you're gonna not put measles all over the map, you have to cluster. And if you're gonna cluster, you have to do villages. And we picked out basically seven or eight circles, roughly center points of where we're gonna put villages. And you can't do villages, you know, with any kind of density if you don't have sewer. So we're not gonna get away from this this measles map unless you do the sewer. So, you know, part of the the objective when we did under the second page when we did Osprey, you have the 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 thing that the health department and uh the states, I mean, you would not believe how hard we had to fight and not have to do septic. They just write, look, we don't have bigger, better you know, ways of doing this. It's a it there's so many specifics of life, but they really wanted us to do sixty-one septic systems. And, you know, it's zone for two hundred houses. And first first off, we don't want to do two hundred houses. They shouldn't be up on that bench. It should be as open as possible. So let's just do sixty. But if we're gonna do sixty, they should still be on the sewer. I don't want to ever do something in that valley that's not on the sewer. Because we're just gonna poison our aquifer and, you know, twenty years from now, we're not gonna be able to drink the water. So maybe sooner. So you have to, you have to cluster it. So, you know, we we very much could have just picked the zero route and not done any sewer. But we also had a problem with Creek Resort needing water. And it just seemed to be the the most reasonable way to solve this is Wolf Creek has water, but not Wolf Creek has sewer, but not of water. And Osprey has water, but not of sewer. Let's just trade the two. So at the end of the day, we worked with Wolf Creek Water and Sewer, uh which was wonderful to work with. And we basically said, yeah, we'll help you, you help us. We worked this out. So six and a half million dollars later, we're building this this giant you know, transfer line. So secondary water, culinary water and sewer flowing back and forth. So sometime in the middle of the summer, we'll finish this up. We're about a third of the way through now. Um maybe half, but uh you know, it's a massive undertaking. But that connects, you know, the system from one side of the valley to the other side. And again, the easier thing to do would have been to put this in for the two hundred things we're working on between Koby and Osprey. And again, the easier thing to do would have been to put this in for the two hundred things we're working on between Kilkab and Osprey. But we didn't, we chose to spend three extra million dollars to build this system for two thousand houses, not not two hundred. Because at the end of the day, Nordic's gonna wake up at some point, and I have no connection to Nordic, but they're gonna wake up and say, well, we wanna. You know, put sewers somewhere, we don't wanna put it into a shielded leach field, that would be terrible. You know, which is what we just approved for Princeton Ridge, and we don't want to do that anymore, that that just pollutes the ground. So you can put an extra thousand things through the lines that are that Osprey, and someday we'll get paid back for that, great, but we were the ones who funded it, front of the money. So this three million dollars I'm talking about didn't come from the county, it came from our pockets, it's our investment into the community.
To be fair, the county did put some money from the tar funds in it.
Well, not a dollar.
No.
No?
Nope.
All the tar funds that they allocated.
Yeah. The two point six million dollars that were devoted as an off ground. Was for two separate projects, one being a reuse pond and the second being for a culinary water well.
Okay. Is that correct? They told us that they did, but some, at least the commissioners told us.
There was some discussion on that.
Okay, so they did not.
To be clear.
I need to fully check into that, but that was.
They cannot, really.
Yeah, they can't give it to a developer. And what they did give to our district, they used on other really good projects, but we didn't get a dime out of anybody.
And you're saying it's two point, I heard it was five million. Was it two point five?
A- anyway, you know, check what we need to check with, but, you know, the the point is, we fronted our own money to put out there and do the right thing. Because, you know, and and really, the next thing I can see is maybe there's a trunk line someday that the county actually does do. And it comes down the highway past the junior high and eventually connects into this, but if they get to the middle of this project, and we don't have a big enough lift station for two thousand things. Then you have to dig up, it will work for the future. So it would have been better if the county did this, and if they initiated it, and if they paid for it, and they would have put twelve inch lines in to begin with, instead of little four inch or six inch. So we had to do that. So and and we were more than glad to do that, but that's what's being done right now.
And this is twelve inch?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of it, you know, there's different parts that are different sizes. The other thing is, this is not a gravity fed system, this is a a a pressureized system that takes it from Osprey to the four-way up to Wolf Creek. And at some point in the future, other projects will will gravity flow into this, but that's what triggers, you have to hook up to this from the state level. So nothing we've done here initiates anyone else having to connect. That's a big deal to the neighbors who aren't gonna get a notice that you have to connect. We're gonna hopefully as a community, you know, endorse that and encourage it, but. You know, the next subdivision that goes in around here should connect to this once capacity is available, but. You know, we're we're trying to lay the groundwork so that this is done responsibly, because at the end of the day, it's gonna grow. And, you know, the other thing I would say is, if you look at that measles map and you think, okay, Charlie, the last number was eighty-six hundred more things coming.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay, so where are we gonna put that? Do we do we want that spread out like measles? No. And is every one of it gonna be swept off from middle fork and put into little villages? Probably not, but I'm sure, you know, four thousand, five thousand things, best case could be moved. So then you ask yourself, well, where do I put those? You know, what what village is gonna take that? Right? Nobody wants to see a village, but it's either that or measles. You look at the third diagram, and that's today's. What would you call it?
Street overlay and a street. Uh, street regulating plans.
Yeah, that's the current street regulating plan. And, you know, this this is a great attempt by the county to try to figure out, well, how are we gonna approach a village? Right? But it's just an attempt. It's a, we're gonna try to do this, but, you know, when you look at the specifics of what's physically drawn right now, because, you know, maps are maps, you wanna try to stick to them as much as you can as as is practical, but. You know, right now, we have multi-family overlaid over the car wash in the county yard. I mean, that's never gonna happen, right? So where are we gonna put multi-family? Where are we gonna put this thousand things you have to hide there somehow? And the only thing left is, you know, the the upper right-hand quadrant and the lower right-hand quadrant, because you already have fabric, you already have storage units, you already have gas stations, you already have hotels. That's clearly already your industrial area, so that's not in your future gonna change. So if we're gonna sweep stuff off the middle fork or wherever and put it into a place like this, you already have kind of a map that doesn't work. You know, it's close, but I don't see multi-family going in a car wash. So, you know, we're gonna come back to you in a month and suggest a few edits, not much, but, you know, you've got a circle here, and you can cut that circle into four quadrants. And you already have two quadrants that are mostly filled in, so we only have two to work with. That's another reason we kind of picked the path that the utilities we put through theirs, so we can't get through the car wash anymore, it's already done. So, you know, we've we've gone to great lengths to put in infrastructure, we've tried to figure out where a village could be practically speaking. And, you know, we're very much in trying to figure out how to implement this general plan, it's a good plan, but. We're gonna do it at some point, and that's kind of how we're approaching it, and, you know, in conjunction with the county and engineering, and trying to, what's a reasonable, responsible way of doing this? So. We'll obviously be back and talk about specific things later, but, you know, I just wanted to give you the overview picture of utilities we're doing and. And basically redoubling down on, we have a good general plan, we have to somehow sweep those units off the valley floor, and if we do that, it has to go to a village. If you do a village, you have to have sewer. That's my presentation.
Can I ask who we are?
Say what?
Who's who are we? You said we, we funded it.
We right now, the people funding it, the the money behind this is is our Osprey project.
Okay. And that's who's also coming back in the future? You said we're gonna come back in the future.
There'll be, we're gonna be coming back in the near future to talk about Eden Crossing, which is another project we're doing in the middle. And, you know, we're finishing design for trying to figure out how it would fit, and what would, what goes where and what's it look like, and I know you guys are real concerned with, and for good reason. What does this look like? Does it look like Sun Valley or Ketchum, or does it look like Rita? So we're trying to lay all that out, before we come back to you, we need to have a good community meeting and and get everyone's input, and then come back to you guys in a month or two and say, here's what we're trying to do and. And here are the resources to pull it off, actually. I can see the wheels moving in your head.
When you mentioned that, sorry, with you, it's gonna connect. Remember your words, but like two sections, the the two parts that are the two, we are talking from the. Osprey area, like the lake area and the Wolf Creek area.
Right.
They said they were not talking pencil, we're not talking.
No, but but that truck line, if you look at the sewer plans that the county has in the future, you know, there's almost like a triangle of infrastructure that eventually needs to go into the upper valley.
Okay.
So I can't speak to, you know, below the elementary school, but from the elementary school, you should be able to get a, or this project that just got, you know. Tabled or whatever happened, you know, they could technically gravity feed because our lift station will be low enough. And they could have sewer, it costs money to get there, but you don't have to do septic.
They could actually connect.
Greg is talking about the work session.
Yeah. Oh, he's not talking about what we just tabled the.
Not Powder Mountain, no, just other things in the area, so that can gravity feed. Eventually Liberty and everything up there could come down the highway, either go to Powder Mountain stuff or come down this. Obviously, Wolf Creek will have to have a plant expansion and everything else, but, you know, the the goal of sewer in the valley, this is the first leg of many, many legs in the future. And it just happens to be kind of privately funded and done, and eventually will be absorbed by the county and taken over, and we'll get reimbursed maybe, but. At the end of the day, it's it's, you know, kind of this is gonna start it. Otherwise, we just get one more twenty acre project after another that uses septic and cuts it up, and we end up with measles again.
And it looks like Jeremy wrench.
Yeah, yes.
What do we call this, by the way? Because I know you're working with Wolf Creek Water, so what is? What is the name of this?
Help maybe, I'm the chair of the Wolf Creek Water and Sewer District.
Yes.
And we call it the pressure conveyor line. It's a pressure conveyor line from the Brownland Station to our plant. So it will bring up its size of believed on helping two thousand units. And it essentially pumps sewage up to the plant for treatment, and then the reuse pond, we're gonna go the ground for us. That reuse pond is the way for us to take that water and use it in summer irrigation, but it has to be stored in winter dissonance.
And one of our co-goals is to take the golf course and eventually get it over to reused water only. That's gonna take a long time, but that's what we need to get to in the next ten, twenty years. Right now, I think it's saving ten percent reuse at the most. You know, we need to change that.
The ponds and communities as well.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, this map is sitting here considering something where the actual proposed spot of the new valley or. Different valley market grocery store is for two different locations.
You see where it says four-way stop?
Yep.
It's right on that W of the Y on the doorway.
Oh, really?
It's about where that valley market building would go, okay, so just. Four's on the side, the W is on the on the grocery store. So it would be as you're looking. Upwards will. And same guy Roger has carried.
Yeah.
You know, this point, the Maverick overflowed every summer with this septic system, and this new grocery store, you know, nobody wants that to go into a giant septic field.
So that would go, that would be one of your first hookups?
It could be, it'd be up to Miranda, but this should be able to convey it.
I think it's probably fair to say we already have a conceptual design of how this source is nearly, basically covered from. Snowcrest Junior High. To Valley Elementary. So that's the the scope, is what we said we'd always look at is the business commercial area between Snowcrest and Valley Elementary. Valley Elementary is a stretch, but getting to old, the the top bit is easy because it's gravity, and then old even is more difficult, but you have to push it uphill. But we're looking at. Three separate pieces, one being the main gravity, two being the side streets on the. Southwest side of of the main road, so. The car wash. Particularly the assisted living, because that's a very heavy sewage area. And then the third project is one all the back up to Brownland Station.
And and we did recently drop that entire wet well four more feet, so you can gravity feed from the elementary school area. So.
Um, we're a little skeptical of that, anyway. We will make it work.
I have a question for you, just a clarification, so if this wasn't going in, would you need the money that was spent on reused ponds and whatnot?
Yes, that was for a different purpose, that was to make sure that we had the water for the four hundred lots created between nineteen seventy to two thousand and eighteen. And we left this, the the lots were all created by the prior developers who've gone bankrupt. They've left us with the responsibility of finding water, we didn't have secondary void for them. So the reuse water essentially provides additional volume, which can use on the golf course, so that the water that's currently gone on the golf course can then be made available to the houses. So it's all a kind of bit of a juggling game. But we believe that there will be enough water to satisfy the existing recorded lots, which was why we were able to lift the moratorium in November twenty twenty-two. Because we had that confidence that that reuse pond and well could take care of it. The well is in is in under a very tight operating agreement with Eden Water Works, because it interferes with their spring. And it will act as an emergency backup both companies, so that both companies have got that confidence that there's a second source of really good water to us, to bring water to us.
There's the reuse pond.
The reuse pond is pretty much in the center of bridges. Pretty good. Can you throw something back there that shows where the reuse pond is?
If you look to the bridges, site planning, see such a water lake with the things in the middle, that was our, that's where we retain this water and then use it for irrigation. Above the power line. No, bridges. So way over by the reserve.
Yes, we didn't actually receive money, receive. We didn't receive commitment to be able to, we've got to spend the money first before we get the money back. Um, but we, the sewers in town is something that is gonna be a separate request from us to the county if they have the money available, because we don't have. And our Wolf Creek customers, we are not expecting our Wolf Creek customers to pay for the sewers in Eden Town. All right.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about updated valley zoning build-out calculations. What do you say, Bill?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I like the conversation because I I feel like it flows neatly from what they're trying to present and and leads into our conversation tonight. I've had some good contact with some planning commission members and members of the public and other interested people about these numbers and. Just a couple of things to keep in mind, these are intended to paint a picture of where we were and where we're headed with the the growth and and things that we're going to see. In the valley, and hopefully help inform policy questions and decisions about. What we need to do to plan for water conservation up in the valley. Just to give everybody an idea where we're at. You can see that there are three, four areas up in the valley that are designated as census designated places, CDPs. That is Liberty, Wolf Creek, Eden, and Huntsville, everything that's not included in those. Areas is in the Ogden Valley CCD, but the Ogden Valley actually, Ogden Valley CCD actually includes those things in the in their numbers, right, Charlie? So the Ogden Valley CCD covers the whole place, whereas those places are just, they're broken down separately. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the polygons, the boundaries are not where you would define large neighborhoods of Wolf Creek, Eden, and Liberty. Uh, just so you guys know, and so when somebody says, well, we think there's a lot more or a lot less in that polygon, they may not be considering where the Census Bureau drew their lines.
So this is Census Bureau.
And the data, the numbers we're working with is Census Bureau numbers.
I wanted to touch on that too, because there was some concern about where we're getting our numbers from, and they don't necessarily jive with numbers from like. Either the state or the Kemsey Gardner Institute or other utilities, I know that. Got a phone call from Miranda about these. These data that we're working with, these are are purely from the census data, and we chose that because. We, well, we had to choose some of them, right? But also because they they're they're kind of the the gold standard when it comes to these kinds of population datas and and looking for growth, so that's what we're looking at. So here you see, these are our overall numbers. This is kind of an unfortunate placement.
Hit that one and then pull it down to the bottom. Um, hit that one and then pull it down to the bottom.
I'm gonna do that to mine. So these, uh, these projections and I included just for interest, the projections that were made in twenty seventeen. Trying to extrapolate out to twenty twenty four. Um, that's in the yellow and so that's what's represented with that yellow column is those numbers that were. Uh, extrapolated in twenty seventeen out to twenty twenty four. And I put that up there for comparison to see. How actually we, we ended up versus how we were projected to end up. And I, because I thought that was super interesting. Uh, you see that in the county overall, we've got, um. Some pretty good numbers there. Any, any questions about any of these numbers?
They were guessing in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
And in two thousand seventeen, we pulled the, um, the five-year ACS data. And so the number in two thousand seventeen is correct. Well, yeah, from two thousand seventeen, we took a twenty-year linear projection. And that projected out to, um, the numbers that you see in the twenty twenty four column.
It's interesting to twenty twenty and then that Ogden Valley did twenty twenty. It, it's interesting because the, the.
Couldn't tell you.
The bigger numbers that you get, I can tell that in just a second. The bigger numbers that you get and the farther apart you, you space them. The more accuracy you're able to build in. So, uh, the, the growth rate that we saw reflected. Um, in the projections in the Ogden, in, in Weaver County overall. Is more accurate than in, um, a place like Eden, for example, where the population actually decreased. And we'll look at that in just a second. Not Eden, I mean Huntsville. And maybe even two. Yeah. So, um, that's why if you take a broader picture and pull in more population. Those numbers and trends tend to even out a little bit more and the peaks and valleys diminish. So, uh, let's see, let's look at Ogden Valley. And you can see that we exceeded the expectations in, in Ogden Valley by quite a bit. Um. These are, these are twenty twenty-one numbers, by the way. So we've got at least another year of. Growth in baked into these numbers that we're not seeing here. Um, but you can see that based on the historic trends, we were expecting to be around seventy-five hundred next year. And we're already knocking on the door of nine thousand. So the growth has been significantly higher than was anticipated. Um. So this is, this is just a look at how the houses are being used. Um, whether they are renter or owner occupied. Um, again, these numbers are from the census and, and. I think that we all know that these numbers aren't necessarily correct, and I'm not sure how the census derived of these numbers. For example, Wolf Creek's got a ninety-five percent owner occupied. But just anecdotally, I think we know there are a lot more second homes up there than. Maybe those are considered to be owner occupied too.
It's of the ones that are occupied, ninety-five percent of them are.
By the owner as opposed to by the, by a renter.
By renter, by.
Oh, explain that. Of the ones that are occupied.
It's of the ones that are being occupied, ninety-five percent of them are occupied by owners, full timers.
Full time and that's the difference.
Yeah. But that doesn't, that doesn't speak to the vacant status.
Because it could be a secondary home, but they're still owned by.
Owned by them, but also owned by an owner and simply uses an investment property and rented out.
That doesn't, that percentage right there wouldn't include that.
Right. And it's got people in it, but it's not an owner occupied.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah. In that case, if it's got people at full time, then it would be five percent.
That's the, but that's long-term renters, right? I'm talking about all the short-term renters that is like Oliver Wolf Creek.
Yep. Yeah. Not counting.
That's not in there.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that clear? Any questions on any of this?
Like, huh?
This one I thought was particularly interesting. Again, this was projection of, of, uh, median income values and, um. Uh, residential home values in the valley. Um, keep in mind that there's a difference between an average and a median. The average means if you divided, add everything up and divide it by the number that you have, that gives you the average. The median means. Um. Halfway between, yeah, halfway between the number of, so even though this, we all know that. Uh, housing up there is very expensive. What this means is that there are. What this could mean, I guess, is that there are a lot of homes really centered around this five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar range. And, and that's reflected in the median residential value.
And where does that value come from? Is that a market value? Is that one of the various tax values?
I would guess it's a, it's an assessed value based on, based on assessor data, because I'm guessing that's where the, the Census Bureau gets their information from.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it gets at the Census or from the assessor or not. They may just pull it from MLS.
I mean, if you ask me, uh. Half the homes in the valley are not worth less than five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
That's what we thought it was an interesting number as well. For that reason.
So again, this is, this is two thousand one estimate. So even in the last couple of years, we've probably seen some. Change in that number as well. Yes, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Two thousand one.
I said, you're right, two thousand twenty.
Quantity number condos. Yes, and that's, so if you're looking at the sheer number of condos that we have, that, that'll definitely bring that number down.
So this is saying that there's, there's, I mean, he mentioned there's a lot in the five, six interval. There's also a lot in the five, four hundred and a lot in the four, three hundred is the same numbers.
Right.
Yeah. So. So again, the, the interesting thing is, is two things. Number one, how, uh, the trend line looked in twenty seventeen compared to what the, the reality ended up being over the, over the. Following four or five years and then, um. Uh, yeah, where we are right now and how, what that means for growth and what that means for taxable value and what that means for. Uh, planning purposes and policies. Um, the median income was, uh, pretty shocking for me as well. Um, that's, uh, that's a pretty good number.
But that's county way.
Uh, no, just the value.
I was under impression the value median income is a hundred and seventeen.
It is.
Didn't we just pull that?
Yep, it's right there on the bottom, hundred and seventeen.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
But this is projected in twenty seventeen, the top is. The top portion is, and then sort of in the blue is, is my.
Actuals.
Yeah. And then this is just a comparison with the state and with Weaver County. And, um, you can see the Ogden Valley is outpacing them all. And these trends have continued both for the state as well as for, um. The valley, but the, the big shocker for me and, and it's probably not unrelated to how much the Ogden Valley has increased, but overall, even in Weaver County, we've well outpaced. The anticipated growth. Pattern in the value. As well, so. I, I know I'm a geek and I love this kind of thing, so I, I appreciate the indulgence. Um. This is really what we came to talk about tonight. Um, the other things are interesting, um, and they're going, they're showing a trend here. But these are the numbers that we really needed to talk about. And when, uh, John and Eric talked about the Measal map and we've talked about it in our, uh, planning commission before as well. Uh, these two numbers really reflect. Um, kind of a shocking amount of open areas and, and development rights in the count, in the Ogden Valley. And just so you know, the difference of about eight hundred units that you're seeing there is based on. Um, and I, I kind of explained this in the staff report, but if, let's say Charlie owns. Um, five and five point seven five acres in the AV three zoning district, that means he's entitled to only one. Unit. For our current zoning ordinances. But let's say I own an adjacent six, six and a quarter acres. That means I get two. Units, right? Just based on the eighty-three. If, if Charlie bought me out. Bought my six and a quarter acres. Charlie then gets my two, plus he now gets pushed over for a total of twelve acres. He gets pushed over into having an additional unit. So based on the raw acreage. We're looking at, that's the nine seventy-seven. Um. Based on our current number of lots and in current entitlements, the way it gets rounded down. Um, that's why you're looking at that number is quite a bit smaller. Does that make sense? I know, I know we, we talked about it.
So. Um, AV three.
Then AV three and in any zoning.
And we only looked at the valley floors.
Okay. And so that's the valley floor. And then.
That's how many are left to yet be developed. So you've got all the ones that exist today. Which is about five thousand or so. I can't remember what the number is. Plus somewhere within the range of eighty-nine hundred and ninety-seven hundred. That's the valley buildout. So we're talking about about fifteen.
About fifteen one?
Fifteen thousand dwelling units in the Ogden Valley. That's what your current zoning does.
Totally. That, this is the remaining and then we have what we have. Okay, sorry, I was.
So based on this, we can start extrapolating out some additional, um, growth figures for the valley. And we can look at, um, the number of existing residences that we have. We can look at. The growth potential that exists and, um, the number of people per. Household, which is right around three. It's a little less than three, but right around three. And what we're finding is that you're looking at between. Um. Twenty-four and almost thirty thousand additional people living in the Ogden Valley. At full buildout.
Additional twenty-four addition.
Twenty-four thousand additional.
Nine that we've gotten.
Yes. Now.
Would you?
Go ahead. No, I'm just gonna say that sounds scary. But there are a number of reasons why we shouldn't be scared about that. Number one is that it, market conditions just don't allow for that kind of growth to happen all at once. It's not like John's gonna come in tomorrow with thirty thousand units that just, or thirty thousand peoples with ten thousand years.
He's gonna have the sewer to do it.
Well, I do hope we have infrastructure before.
Yeah, the question isn't so much about sewer or water, it's about transportation.
Absolutely. That was my next thing is, yes, we need that, but we also need roads and we need, yeah.
And UDOT isn't the type of, uh. Department that. Says, I'm sorry, we're full. They say, okay, let's see how many more lanes we could fit in this canyon.
Did they say that? I don't know that I've ever heard that.
Well, say we'll build the bridge.
Okay. So in previous plans that we've had, uh, we've had tunnels through mountains, we've had, uh, cog rails, we've had, um, gondolas. So all kinds of transportation options for people to get in the valley. But I think this is. When we were doing the, the general plan in twenty sixteen, I mean, it was still. The future was still just as unclear and just as unpredictable as what we're talking about now. And for me, the glass ceiling is transportation. Um, you think about Jeremy Ranch or any of that Park City area, you think about Mountain Green, nice and easy to get there, fifteen minutes from Mountain Green to the base. And so a lot of people, uh, do that commute. It's nice and easy and UDOT keeps those roads clear. Um, UDOT continues to add lanes and parleys, uh, because we see the transportation need going back and forth. And so at some point in time. Are we gonna hit a glass ceiling because the canyon is full? Or are people gonna start making different choices that will lead the state to make different investments on transportation against the valley?
And I think when it comes to transportation, that the cautionary tale, Charlie and I grew up in Utah County. And I can remember when driving up Provo Canyon was like an all-day event.
Two-lane road.
Two-lane sketchy windy little road. And, uh, now you barely even slow down when you hit the canyon.
We grew up in Utah Valley separately, not together.
Oh, we certainly did together.
So I hear three people for home just about here.
So, so, so I mean. Talking about infrastructure and this, the projected growth. From a planning perspective, basically the thing that's, I mean, assuming that we can fit all these people and, and it's not a problem and it's still beautiful. We can make all those wonderful things happen, which are no easy thing to do anyway. How do we mitigate the pro, the pain that the current residents will have to go through for traffic woes? Cause UDOT's not gonna fix anything till there's a problem.
Yeah.
And the county's not gonna shell out to fix the divide because we don't have that kind of money to put into that. I mean, that's a huge investment. And same with Ogden Canyon, right? I mean, there's just. There's no good way. And I mean, so, so what do we look at having? Services and employment things in the valley, which would mean we'd need to relook at what we're after, because we don't have. We're not building, we're not planning this for a, for a. I mean. If you look at what we're planning, it's mostly shops and restaurants and touristy type, which doesn't necessarily pay enough to pay people to live there and stay there.
Right.
This is kind of what I'm getting at.
I agree.
So if we're not building out that type of. Uh, area. At what point do we go, wait a minute, maybe we shouldn't be building it out because we don't have any way to get. To places where people can earn a living.
That is a policy decision that you guys can make a recommendation on and the commissioners will have to make a final decision, but the commissioners have. I don't know, these three commissioners specifically, but commissions in the past have said that. We're not downzoning, we're not taking those rights away. And so. It's just, girl is gonna follow, uh, because it's already, the, it's already there. Just imagine it's already there. Keep on telling people that field is not empty behind you. It's empty now. But it's not empty in perpetuity.
But so, so that, I mean, pushing on this, just you're right. Like I said, if we could magically do that, that's great. But how do we do that from a planning perspective? When we have, what do we, how do we plan for transportation? How do we plan for that? And our roads currently aren't up to, up to that, even if the developers did a lot of it, the main thoroughways aren't. The main thoroughway around from the Eden to Huntsville has ninety-degree bends in it and turns and all kinds of problems.
So that's traffic coming.
Yeah. Well, eventually we're gonna have to start to look at public infrastructure districts, um, and things like that where we start having. Them pay into the improvements of those areas. Um, most of the time that happens when you actually become a municipality. Um, that's typically when you see those things happen more in detail. In the county, you may see them a bit. But once you look at incorporation and things like that, that's when those type of things happen much more rapidly. So if I heard you correctly. If we want the growth, we're all gonna have to pay for it to be comfortable. To meaning, meaning that if we want to, if we want to have all these homes developed. Rights. We're all, and not have an interruption of our, our commute or have a huge backup from the Ogden Divide. Have as many accidents as we have, we're gonna have to implement a tax to make that work.
Oftentimes those things happen, but most of the time they happen when you're dealing with water and sewer.
Yeah.
Those are the life safety issues. You don't get into the public transportation as much. It could.
In this case, it would be more applicable, I would think. I mean, you look at, where do you go to the hospital? Where do you go to any healthcare? Where do you go to?
So that's one of the things, when we were doing the twenty sixteen general plan. This whole idea of density got so. The public got so entrenched in the discussion about density and how much density could possibly happen here. That it, it felt to me like they just threw the idea of master planning, uh, transportation plan for the, the valley out the window. We came with best practices on several different routes that could be possible, uh, as the community builds out. And, uh, all we got was red stickers on all those routes saying, get, get rid of these. But at the same time, we also heard. Our roads are clogged up and all of the recreational events in the summertime use our roads and we have no way of getting around. There's only one road that goes around.
Yeah.
So these solutions that we've heard from folks will stop that from happening, not have some alternative routes.
Well, so, so that begs the question. So assuming we do. The, the, the communities, right? Um. The communities seem like a great idea, the villages, but even in that. There, there, you're gonna need major infrastructure for in and out.
Yep.
Right? And we don't have that. So.
Yeah. So I guess my answer, when we're looking at UDOT, if we're not, if the county or the, really the neighbor, the, the valley itself doesn't have control over those UDOT roads. And doesn't have the political persuasion to get UDOT to do certain things, I would say adjust expectations.
I don't know what that means.
I, I think, I think.
Renew. On what, on efficiency of transportation.
He's saying be used to waiting in a line.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I think what he's saying.
I think nobody wants that.
What I'm hearing, having heard in some other places where things have gotten out of hand is. Yeah, this is a nice document. It's got some fantasy in here. If you. If you really look at every word and you consider where we are now, you can't have everything that's in here. You can't have all this TRD stuff and you can't have. You know, thirty or twenty-some thousand people without a whole bunch of new roads, but no one's gonna pay for them. So from a planning perspective. Having seen it for now. Without a whole bunch of new roads, but no one's gonna pay for them. So from a planning perspective, having seen it from other places. I mean, for my outlook, you have to start planning to throttle back. And if.
Planning to throttle back.
Development, the development, the development, so fewer, fewer of everything, less of everything. Until there's capacity, water, sewer, roads, all the things that aren't free. That the people in the valley today aren't going to wanna pay for. Cause they're already living there, why would they wanna pay for all those things just for more people to come and make it more uncomfortable? So from a planning perspective, I would hope we could plan to educate those on the county commission or whoever else. Until the capacity exists, we can't do all of this development. We can't have. All of these um current zoning situations, we can't. The the develop transfer of development rights, maybe that has to be completely rethought and adjusted in how that works and what the. What the map is related to those. You heard John Lewis say, don't do the bonus density. I mean, I I was asking this week about bonus density at Snow Basin, that makes no sense what to me whatsoever to give them. Um more density. But in any event, it just seems to me from a planning perspective, if if the numbers are looking. Like the valley won't support or the the numbers on paper can't be supported by the valley, the roads, the water, the sewer. Then why say keep going in that direction? Why not make an adjustment or addendum to this plan? That says, based on this right now, we have to make some adjustments.
Everything you're saying is everything at, at least the vocal part of the valley is crying out for. That I that I hear all the time. I'm sure everybody here is hearing all the time. But I thought the problem we have, it's not, I mean, it's, I don't know, that it's a. People have property rights, they just do. I if I own property, you know.
You have a right to something.
So the ultimate question, we all want.
And the commissioner just said they're not downzoning.
Who's willing to give up the property rights?
That's that's right. And so I, you know, we can vamp in.
I think the state's gonna do their improvements when the developments there. Yeah, they're not gonna build it just cause, they're gonna do it when they need there.
So after, so after we're waiting an hour to get just to the base of the.
Trappers loops a prime example.
Yeah.
You know, Snow Basin did a study on Trappers, a traffic study. It's a joke. I mean, I feel bad for the people that live in that little subdivision above gas station there, they can't even get to their houses. When people are trying to get Snow Basin, I mean, it's a problem. But UDOT's not gonna do anything, but I think that's a UDOT rule.
Paper too, that they said they weren't gonna do anymore.
Because it's seasonal and it only happens occasionally.
Yeah, but the state is gonna do the canyon when the canyon's full time.
People are gonna catch on, well, they're gonna start going up Ogden Canyon, and then you're gonna have Ogden Canyon being pretty long.
Canyon's at ninety eight percent, isn't it already?
Ninety eight percent in twenty sixteen.
So the canyon's already at ninety.
Then why have those people from Salt Lake caught on? They're gonna start going up Ogden Canyon.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be a mess.
But they start building another rainbow freeway out, it takes years of study and they say, well, we have another lane and then they do it.
Well, it's like, we used, before they put legacy in, you're always bottlenecking.
Right, and we're now we're in there too, so. Well, the issue with transportation planning uh is the more lanes you put in, the uh easier it is to get from point A to point B. Which mean uh it increases the motivation somebody might have to be even further away from where there's where they're gonna be. You think about.
That's True Dot's goal. I was in a conference today and that's exactly what Carlos said. He said, we. Our intention is to make it so that we can transport easily from one end of the state to the other with no issues.
Yes, and one of the things that UDOT is trying to do to their credit is they are trying to do a little bit more place-based transportation planning. Where it's not just add more lanes uh as demand comes in. They're trying to defer to the locals a little bit on what the plan is. They do call us and ask us our opinions on things. Then they say, thanks, at least we did our due diligence, we're not gonna do it, thanks but no thanks. Um so they they do try a little bit here and there. Um that's new. Uh from UDOT, that's over the last five or so years, they've started doing that.
Speaking of that, that trail that was even brought up in the meeting here a few minutes ago, I'm guessing that's part of the funding, the two hundred million that was allocated from. Um legislated to put trail systems to every community in the state. Is that correct?
I don't know if that was actually on their priority list, but I know Ogden City's looking to do some pretty serious investment. Weaver County did put some Prop One funds uh into, I think we did two hundred.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand.
Trail's been on the books for a while.
House Foundation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just worked with the trails.
They allocated as part of it, like they'll get some of that money, because they just barely, it was like this session, he said they put.
And I don't know if that's actually going to this or not, but um it wouldn't surprise me if some does, but.
The Trail Foundation raises money, they've been, they've been earmarking and putting things over, I've been hearing about that for a while.
The other thing to keep in mind is um these these projects that would serve the connection between the Wasatch Front and. Ogden Valley are going to be expensive and take a long time to both plan out as well as um fund.
And execute.
And execute, but the the real question is going to be, where does UDOT get their biggest bang for their buck? If the if the growth that we're seeing everywhere else on the Wasatch Front continues to suck resources that way. We're gonna continue to see pressure into the valley to grow, but UDOT's gonna be less and less able to respond to the concerns. That are going to continue to grow in the valley. So uh yeah, it's 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 gonna be. Well, yeah, exactly. And so we're we're talking about thirty thousand additional people, thirty thousand additional people along the Wasatch Front is a rounding error. It means a lot to us, because it's where we live, but to UDOT looking at, they're just like, well, you guys figure it out.
So which, sorry, um I don't pay much attention to which ones are state roads and which ones are county roads, like so. Because obviously, we're talking UDOT, but the county has roads in here as well, and the county is asking us to figure out our worker. Home and our TDR system and, you know, our home prices double or whatever the rest of theirs. And so they're getting the income, the county, you know, since we're not incorporated.
We do have a transformation master plan, if that's where you're going.
Yeah, and what you know, that goes with the thirty thousand people.
It, they didn't estimate thirty thousand when they did that.
But that's also not including the re- the recreationalists.
That's true.
And that's the hard part is, we add, we have one or two condos, how many people does that actually bring recreationally to the place?
Well, when you look at it that way, if that condo is a hundred percent occupied and we estimate everything based off of a hundred percent occupancy, we're overbuilding it, right? Um and so I think we wanna try and do that uh to the best we can, so that it's less uh impactful to those who who live here. And I think we can have pretty good data and scientific reasons why we would tell a builder or a developer to overbuild. Because we can't predict when it's gonna be primary, when it's not.
We have, we have a double negative, are we, we're hitting both sides, both seasons, summer and winter.
During the candle of bold bands.
Exactly. We got the summer or the winter ski resorts and we've got the summer lake.
Yeah.
With and even the winter, we also have the um the ice fishing. You've got people parking all along the roads there, we just don't have places for it. Did you have a comment?
I did. Um if you take the number of houses extra of the number of houses that you say we have. Five thousand something.
Mm-hmm.
And you look at the number of the population that you're reporting, that isn't free perhaps.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So it it isn't twenty four thousand people, it's a, it's a different number. And I can tell you, based on the water use that we see in Wolf Creek, the population in Wolf Creek is not increasing. You've seen how many developments you've approved for John Lewis and how many new houses he's built. Our popu- our amount of water use is not increasing. I'll say that again, it is not increasing. There are fewer people living there. We have more than half of our water bills are sent out of state or out of valley. The vastment, it's like up to half of the houses in Wolf Creek now are second homes. So what is being built. Are for large periods of year, empty buildings. And that's why the secondary water is so important, because there's still a landscape and they still use the landscape water. But the culinary water is actually decreasing. We've got it down now to like, uh it was also. Four hundred and something, I think it was three hundred and something.
But the problem is. You're correct, I'm sure you're correct. But the problem is, and just like with with, you know, we experienced with COVID, right? We're we're looking at doing like just in time, we look at what a bottleneck causes, right? When do we have problems? So you have to plan for the the bulk and not.
Absolutely right.
The minimum, so it's like, oh, well, half of them are gonna be, you know, look at, look at Nordic, right? That was supposed to be a halftime. Well, now everyone's there full time, everyone's upset.
Supposed to be a summer home development, it wasn't even halftime, it was supposed to be.
So we have to plan as if everyone is living there and make that assumption, so.
There are certain times of the year where everyone uses, I mean.
Yeah, and it's usually the same times, right? Everybody comes.
Yes and no, the valley is full and in fact, our water usage peaks. But the days between Christmas and New Year or Christmas and depending on when the weekend's full, it's that period. And we have a lot of trouble persuading the state that that's true, and they're like, well, that can't be, everybody else peaks in the summer. It's like, well, no, because we have fifteen minutes secondary water and it really is this period. So that period of time is like double the population rest of the time.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I just need to understand, I'm having a hard time understanding. I believe you, but I, because, maybe because of where I live, but. So I've been in the valley for closing in on ten years. I live in Wolf Creek, I live in a short term rental. I live in Moose Hollow.
Moose Hollow, okay.
Okay. It is exponentially busier than it was when I first moved there. Um and especially in the summer, I mean, it's just family reunion central, but every single weekend is packed.
Yes.
And the homes are completely packed to the amount, if we get a limit, how many people could go into a home, because it was big, thirty people at home. I I don't understand, they're not, how can they not be using water? Like, I just don't understand.
We have, we have, every week, it goes up and down. It goes up on Fridays, stays up on Saturdays and down on Sundays.
Okay.
And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is really low, so we have, we have waves that go through the system.
Randall, what's your estimated gallon per day per residence? You know what that is?
Per resident?
Or or do you do per person if you have that number?
Well, if you include the secondary, it's like two seventy, because we have to, you know, we have a golf course. We have a tiny little population of twelve hundred people, but full-time residents, supporting a full skies golf course. So if you add it all up, it makes it look like we're using a tremendous amount.
That's per dwelling unit, is that what you're saying?
Not, you asked me per person.
Okay, how about?
I replied, per person, which is like two seventy. Per dwelling unit, we use a number, the number that is our our legal criteria or our rules criteria. Division of drinking water is, we use for long-term planning, two ninety six.
Yeah.
Per per connection, per day peak so, peak day source demand.
And so your system is built with that peak demand in mind, right?
Correct.
So about nine thousand gallons per per unit per day?
No.
Or per month, I mean.
I said it, I said two hundred and ninety six is the number we use for long-term planning.
Per day.
Is peak day source demand per connection.
Okay, so.
We have twelve hundred units, we have to come up with two hundred, we we actually, the number fluctuates. But the number we use for long-term planning is just under three hundred gallons per day.
And so that's, if you multiply it out, out per month, you get nine thousand gallons a month?
Thirty days. Because this is a peak day, we we, it's it's a very different.
Okay, yeah.
The the division of drinking water requires us to be able to satisfy the peak day.
Like I said, and the plan for the.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So question for the planning commission is, I don't know how you feel, and I'd be curious to know. Uh do, is there any interest in kind of going a little bit deeper in that and maybe working on saying something like, hey? We don't really have transportation or jobs to 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 keep people from having to drive in and out of this place all the time. Do we wanna look at putting pauses or or looking at plans?
Can you do that though? Just take away their property rights?
Well, I would say, I don't know.
That's, I'm just asking, like, is that something we're even interested in, even if it's, I don't know what.
We can, we can do it for two circumstances. The first circumstance is if we're redoing our general plan. And the second circumstance is if there is a critical failure or deficiency in a a particular type of infrastructure. And it has to be, both of those have to be, you're talking about a moratorium and both of those have to be um. Linked to a a particular project and and a date certain for finishing the the project. So and quote, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, that's my my understanding and moratorium law.
Moratorium is only good for six months.
Or yeah.
Max.
They're also limited in their duration.
So I think what they're talking about is essentially removing rights, uh development rights from property. Which, I mean, you can spend as much time as you want having that conversation, we can do what we wanna do in 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 within this uh room here. But the county commissioners.
Now, Charlie, I would tread, I'd ask you to tread lightly there, just because the county commissioners have said that in the past, doesn't mean that the voting block isn't gonna have a. Have something to say about it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They might have said that in the past, but then when we say, hey, guys, we don't wanna wait in line for an hour. Anytime we wanna go to the restaurant or someplace outside of this place, what whatever it is, or to the hospital.
Yeah.
Then they might reconsider, so I'm not saying that, I know they're property rights people, but maybe they're somewhere in the middle that we go, hang on, guys. This plan sounds good, but we don't have any way to do it.
The real trouble that we might run into with that kind of thinking though is that right now we've got a minimum of eighty nine hundred thirty six units. That are already approved. So if you went in and changed the zoning on them to require forty acre lots or whatever, these the these. Current entitlements would still carry forward um due to a a legal non-conforming status. Eighty nine thirty six.
So so those are not established lots, those, that's the, that's wrong.
That's.
Divided by, yeah, so, but the ones that are established, we wouldn't be able to withhold.
Yeah.
When they went from one acre to per line to three.
Yep.
So the county already.
Yeah, so as far as legalities go, yes, as long as you don't completely rob the property owner of value. And there's value, well, arguably, there's value in having a golf course, open space, there's value in a number of things.
So he mentioned the two ways to do it, restructure the general plan, and if there was a critical.
Two, they're, sorry, we're talking about two different things. He uh Bill's talking about enacting a moratorium.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, because I thought the way that this has, you know, there was such. Uh there was some anger at the water moratorium on building from a variety of people. But then, of course, for for other people who wanna slow down everything, it was like, well, that's. Because we, if it comes, when I joined this board, that was one of my questions, was like, once it comes to us and they have their, we got the approval letter. We have to say yes, because they meet the ordinance.
Yeah.
So our safety net was the water boards, when they were like, we don't have water for you.
That's right. You still have safety nets in the general plan, uh because what you're looking at when, say, based on someone comes in and wants to develop. You're balancing all the different issues out. You do not have to approve a rezone just because they're coming in and saying. We want this. You're going in and you're doing balancing acts. It's like in the general plan, you mentioned that, you know, not everything can be accomplished. And what you're doing is you're looking at the density, you're looking at infrastructure, you're looking at roads. You're looking at all of those things. And as you look at rezones, you are not obligated to approve this. So don't look at this number and have this as a scare tactic, because it's not. Um there's things that you have mechanism wise, that you can control all of these things through the general plan. And balancing those policies and decisions out. It's not like a one and done, that, oh, we have this amount of density that's out there. It's just maybe the timing's not right because of infrastructure, because of roads, and you could deny those based upon those things.
So I was, that's the question, that's what I was, that's what I was hoping you would say, something, because I'm not necessarily advocating that we go out and downzone everyone. But I'm asking, should we even discuss and go down roads? Are you guys even interested in saying, hey?
For sure.
What are these avenues and how do we go, hold on a minute, we are not comfortable with this rezone, and just making sure that we're all comfortable with saying.
Okay, hold on, so then I'm gonna try to restate it and make sure I got. So currently, we have this general plan, we have these seven villages, and like somebody comes in and says. According to this general plan, I'm going to work with it and I wanna put density points from the bill, the valley floor into one of those. Places, I wanna rezone it for mase village or whatever we're calling that. Um. The way that I understand we've been on the board is, it's in line with the general plan, the forum base is where people are, you know, what enables us to get from the measles to the. To the village thing, and so we've been approving, you're saying that even though.
You're not.
So but so even though it fits the general plan, the people are following what we've stated that we want and think is good for the valley. And everybody, like the valley had say, and more or less. And everybody, like the valley had say, and more or less agreed that we can say, even though it meets all of that, no.
You can, you can say that the timing's not right. All you need is basically a scintillate information. That, and you have to have findings for it. You can't just say, I don't want this because your name is John Smith. Um, you have to have reasoning for denying that rezone at that time. And a lot of it can be the timing. The timing isn't right. We don't have.
This is very subjective. How do we back that up? Like the roads are.
The path cannot be safe with thirty thousand more people. The.
Well, but we're not talking about thirty thousand. Right now, we're talking about whatever. I don't wanna name a real project because I don't wanna point anybody out, but somebody wants to put in. You know, a hundred condos. If that's covering, I'm sorry. I really honestly just said around them. But, but you know, it's foreign base, it's in line with the general plan and we can just say, listen, we're not sure how this works without traffic and I this, I that. Don't we need something more hard?
You can take public comment that happens in the meeting and you can use that towards that because remember in our training. That public clamor does not apply to administrative items. When you have public hearings, we want to get that public comment. And we wanna hear their input on rezones and legislative items. And if the timing isn't right. Because of certain things that you hear from the public or certain things that you see out there. You make those as part of your motion and findings to deny that.
Okay, I just not realized. I thought we needed something more. I thought we needed something more concrete.
No, and so that's where, you know, we're coming up with these numbers based upon the census. And information that's out there. And that's how most communities create their general plans. And do that is based upon census information.
Sorry, Rick, hang on. I just wanna clarify, cause there might be something, the nine, the nine thousand is what current zoning allows. It's not based on projections or.
Yeah, not, not this number, but I'm talking about what we talked about previously before this. This is based upon our current zone. Yeah, correct. And so that's where I, I don't want you guys to go up on this number and think of this as a. A scare tactic because it's not. It's just, this number's out there, yeah. But we have a general plan and we have many policies in that general plan that. When you make decisions, you have to balance those decisions out and that's how you, um, make logical decisions.
There was somebody in twenty sixteen who looked at the measles map and said, you're just using this as a scare tactic to get us to do something. And my comment back to her was. If measles is scary.
Yeah, why are you scared?
But this was an arbitrary, this was just like a ra- artist rendering, right? This wasn't, or was this accurate?
We haven't, we haven't gone in, but.
It was randomly done at the right.
This, this is different. So what you're looking at here, we haven't gone in and verified what John did with this. This is not the measles map. This is a version of the measles map that John is working with, eh, a consultant who actually we considered hiring. Eh, trying to illustrate what is nine thousand more units on the valley floor in the context of the existing zoning. The measles map that existed in twenty sixteen and, and prior to that, that Miranda was referencing was our consultants who were doing the general plan at the time. We did the math and we said, wow, we think we've got somewhere between five and ten thousand more. They just kind of randomly splattered it out. And evenly, eh, generally speaking, across the valley floor. This one is hopefully, once we can verify, validate it. Is a little more accurate. Doesn't mean that those dots are gonna be right there, depending on where the roads go.
So neither here nor there and that. I mean, the, the essence, the idea is we look at, I mean, look at the, we can look at the population. We can say that's from the census, so it's. Pretty close to as good as you're gonna get. And look at the population that's growth, that's from twenty twenty-one. And then when we talk about, you know, development of adding another four hundred, is how's that gonna affect the current infrastructure? Whether it be driving, which was the one I'm referencing. And we can use that so as a, as a reason that this might not be the right time. We don't have, so, and it can be, if I'm hearing that correctly, it can be, look, these additional two hundred units. That you're this, this rezone isn't right because we could have additional traffic in the area and. It would cause undue burden on the rest of the residents to have that extra traffic.
So I wanna push pause just a little bit in that conversation because we are talking about nine thousand more units without any results. If we're doing TDRs, if we're doing form-based rezones, we're trying to move those units around, we're not increasing density, so we're not increasing traffic. Now, we may be increasing traffic in, along certain roadways, but if we're talking about the canyons or it's the same number regardless of. Whether we're doing form-based reasons or sticking with the existing zoning build out.
But entitlements, entitlements, entitlements like that are, are tricky. And this is like, I don't wanna call it the worst case scenario. Cause that sounds terrible, but it's, it's the maximum risk scenario, let's call it.
Which might not even be a hundred years from now. We don't have a projection that goes out far enough to give it. Projecting out any more than fifty years is irresponsible and it's beyond that.
And as we've seen, even that is, is kind of a.
Cause we tend, one thing, the land, what's the land trust? I'm sure they've got a bunch of that is in there.
But the, the, at the end of the day, I, and I think this is the.
We did pull those numbers out.
This is the point that Rick is trying to make, is that there are natural constraints to development that. Will slow things down, not only the market conditions that show the demand. Um, but also i- if there are not roads to get into where they need to be, and if it's too expensive to build the roads to get to where you want to develop. You can't develop. So all of your development rights are not worth anything because you can't get out there to them. And if there's no water, you can't develop. You just can't. If there's nowhere to put your effluent, you can't develop. You can't. There are natural concerns. I think that's what the point we were trying to get at. If the roads aren't there, the water and sewer's not there, the other infrastructure, schools, other things. You just can't develop. And regardless of the, of the entitlements that you may have, if it's too expensive. It won't happen.
So that goes back to the current zoning and saying, well, currently it's here, but it hasn't been done because it's not market, makes it make sense. So we wanna rezone to something that we can build. Like cheaper and make more money.
That might enable, that might enable faster growth. So saying that it can't be done. Today is not the same thing as saying it can't be done fifty or a hundred years from now. And so.
But even then, if we look at fifty or a hundred years from now, the, the roads are bound to change.
They are, which they'll go further, they'll go longer, they'll access more land. And so if we are interested. So let's just pretend that there's the political willpower to never upzone anything in the valley again. Eh, form basis and upzoning, by the way, just, we're just, we're just mixing the units.
Yeah.
So just, we're just mixing the units around. We're.
There's your little sales pitch for form base.
No, 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 no. Look, I'm not of the, eh, persuasion that you guys need to do form base. I'm of the persuasion that if you're gonna do your general plan, you've got a very limited number of tools to use. Because you're trying to balance a lot of different things. And so if the idea is, this is our max. And we don't wanna spread out everywhere, you could be proactive. And actually plan where these areas are gonna go. But if you're proactive, you're greasing the skids and you might actually see a little bit more growth, a little bit faster. But you've been proactive and you've anticipated that and you've anticipated where it's gonna be located. Now, we haven't really seen TDRs actually move. We.
Well, they haven't really made them yet, helping.
But not, eh, we'd have to rezone something to it.
Did that get done when I wasn't?
Go ahead. So how much of the entire TDR? World is written down and codified?
There's very little of it.
Alright. So sort of what I've heard over the few meetings I've been to. Doesn't, about TDRs doesn't necessarily drive what's written, which, with what's written in here. In, in general, I mean, this talks about, um, the planning commission approving every TDR transaction.
Yep.
It doesn't contemplate banking, eh, TDRs.
Yep.
Which in my opinion, just, from what I know. Not banking of TDRs doesn't take away anybody's rights, but it does. Eh, cause a little bit of an issue for speculators and developers. And that may be a pacing item. Not banking would be a pacing item for development. Having the planning commission involved with every transaction. Making it a, well, this talks about a county register of all so anybody could look at. I mean, there's other things in here. So what if this commission were to, um, go through and create, or Ogden Valley, forget about Western Weaver. A TDR process that is reasonably compliant with this works. In the foreseeable future, maybe paces that out a little bit.
Let me tell you what.
Okay.
Um, and it's, it's really simple. It's, um, it's a matter of willpower. Right now, if I've got, eh, the ability to develop my land, give me a really good reason why I shouldn't.
Cause you don't have the money to do it.
Maybe. And so I, I do agree that in those cases, we're looking at maybe the hinterlands first being able to sell. But if we're looking at that primary on the valley floor, trying to keep that from developing. One dwelling unit for three acres is, you're gonna get more money out of developing that and selling it than you're going to at a transfer rate. And getting a smaller piece of property or a condo out of a, a village center. And so my motivation is a hundred percent at that point, just, I'm done, I'm retiring, sell land. And let it be chopped up one unit for three acre or clustered. And so we're still spreading that out. If we don't create a program where transfers are just stupid simple. Like it, it is the, the default that people go to. I could either spend a ton of money on developing my land or I could just hurry and do this transfer. And now, again, when I go and develop my land, I'm maybe on a bad day, gonna pull ten percent out of that. But in the valley, in the three acre zone, we're looking at three percent of the properties are going into roadways. Whereas out west in the one acre and the half acre zones, you're looking at more like twelve percent of the properties being, eh, devoted for roadways. So the amount of money I've got to invest to build three acre lots is significantly lower. So my margin goes up significantly higher. So I'm twenty, twenty-five percent return on investment.
Does that include water and sewer connections and, and all of that?
Yeah, because you're, we're just talking about length. We're just talking about length of pipe, the length of road, length of whatever it is, eh, to get to my frontages to stub in. I don't have to go out and around and, you know, eh, to the other side, cause I'm just going hundred fifty feet, hundred fifty feet, hundred fifty feet. One three acre lot at a time. Um, so if I can get, eh, you know, with that twenty-five percent return on investment, if that still makes more sense to me, I'm gonna develop it and sell and move out. But if that twenty-five percent return on investment is almost equivalent, almost equal to a TDR. Number one, and that TDR is way easier than going through the red tape that the government puts up. And have them go to the planning commission and have all my neighbors mad at me, then I'm gonna choose TDR. But it's gotta be stupid simple. And I don't know a stupid simple way to do a one-to-one transfer if we don't just line them up and shoot them out.
Yeah, I don't know that that, I mean, that doesn't meet the spirit in this sense.
I know.
And we're always talk, obviously here, oh, we have to follow the plan. Well, it doesn't follow the plan as I read it.
No, I, I don't disagree with you. It's one of the reasons why TDRs haven't been adopted, haven't been created. We've been talking TDR since the nineties.
The only people that are gonna be doing, using their TDRs for development, like say John for his developments, he's already got them. He's not going out and buying them.
Correct.
And I think it's.
You're talking about the Wolf Creek stuff? Cause then, cause if we don't create this banking ability. Which properties, you know?
I don't know. I, all I know is that Wolf Creek has a bunch of.
Yes. Yeah.
So they've gotta come down and use them on the valley floors.
Oh, I see.
Look, they, they could use them, but it costs more.
Correct. That's the difference.
Correct. But I'm just saying, a new development comes in, developer comes in, I wanna build three hundred units. He buys a piece of property in the one base village down in Eden. And he only has enough rights for the property that he's on, to build maybe two dwelling units if he wants to build. He's gonna have to go and buy those. That right there is gonna slow the growth down because that's gonna be cost prohibitive. I need to go buy three hundred, like two hundred ninety years dwelling.
That attacked the two hundred people.
Or he's gonna talk to some guy, I have to be chuck the land and that's the zone to him.
True.
But still, that's gonna cost money. That's gonna hurt his, his return on investment. I don't think development's gonna just blow up. So unless you have the land and the, the, the density rights to do it.
But I heard the number, and I think I heard it somewhere in this room, six thousand dollars with TDR or, either that's what transacted once or something.
That number, eh, so if we are actually looking at, eh, TDRs being a real property and, eh, eh. Eh, the way that the market sets that is based on comparables. That number is based on what Ogden City wants out of their property. So they bought the, eh, CBR one property at the end of Stringtown Road. I wanna say it was for four million bucks, something like that, way more than they should have bought it for. Um, and they would sure like to get some of that money back. And so.
They're offering like six thousand?
As, well, if you take the four million divided by however many units are on that property, it was about six thousand a piece. Now, I think if I'm, if I own a farm, I'm not selling it for six thousand a piece. I'm selling it for thirty to forty thousand a piece at least. Cause that's gonna be about what my return on investment is if I'm dividing it up into, eh, three acre parcels. So when you're competing with someone who can put a flood on the market.
And how many do they have?
Five hundred.
Well, they've already got an options contract set up for those to be sold, right? Like Ogden City or not.
They're, they've been having a lot of conversations with a lot of different people. Now, TDRs aren't gonna go anywhere unless they start selling and unless there is comparables. It's actually kinda cool, I think, if some of these are going for six thousand at first, cause then you get that market started. But I get the whole, oof, that's gonna put, that's a flood, that's gonna put a lot of units that wouldn't have otherwise been there out on the. Eh, on the, eh, well, in these villages. I get that concern.
Well, you look at the land trust, they could sell a whole bunch.
Again, in fact, the way that the plan is written is to hopefully enable the land trust to gobble a bunch and then maybe flip a little bit. Get that money, go gobble up a whole bunch more, then maybe flip a little bit. Now, I suggested that to the land trust and they said, no, it's not really in our mission. Eh, we just rather got gobble it all up and retire it, but.
Right.
That money isn't unlimited. And so if they have the ability to leverage a little bit of the open spaces that they're.
Land trust, you had agreed to not develop your land.
Yeah.
So most of the time you've got, you're doing conservation easements, start that. But the land trust owns the conservation easement. They could certainly set it up to. Sell two or three, two or three lots of the open space and then use the proceeds to go buy ten times that amount. Somewhere else.
And what about TDRs in like ridgeline areas and landlocked areas and areas that are absolutely not buildable? At the moment. No, I mean, they're gonna be worth the same something. I mean, that, again, that's not consistent with what I'm reading here.
That's right. So eh, the thing that I would suggest looking at as you're driving down I fifteen is there's a big house perched off the side of at. Least a forty-five, fifty, eh, forty-five degree, eh, slope.
Yeah, that's the hard thing is you can't tell them, you can't say that it can never be built there, cause.
Reasonably that.
Yeah, no, that's today, you can't say that. Like today, it's not reasonable. But I mean, you look at, you drive from here to Heber. All those mountains, all those houses along that hillside. Some point, at one point, someone said, well, those will never get built, cause it's gonna slump off.
I would have said those won't get built for a, a lot quicker than the ones up in the valley, but no, they went, they went fast.
But there are, in the codes, there are ridgeline buildings.
Yes. So you're not building on the ridge lines because you have to be a certain distance away from the ridge line. That doesn't mean that your backyard can't be in the ridge line. And so when we're looking at densities, those density points are still there. It's just when a developer says, oof, there's all this sensitive land. We don't wanna build on the sensitive land, cause either there's an ordinance that says we can, or because it's gonna cost us too much to bridge the swamp or whatever it is. Well, that's a good space for a backyard, cause right here next to it is a good building pad. So let's configure our lot so that they've got two point nine acres. In, in the unbuildable area and we'll plot a house right here. That's why that whole gross acreage divided by whatever the zone is. That's why it is that way, because we haven't actually built codes and that stop people from maximizing their density.
And you could do, eh, clustering, so you could just use the whole thing as swamp, like it could be a whole swamp, you go.
And then build all three units in the corner right here.
One of the important things though is at the end of the day, in those village areas, we get the density moved into those areas. And one thing we've identified in the village area is that we have some type of transit hub. And so eventually we have UTA using those roads to move into those areas. So they're, the road, they're not going everywhere on all the farm roads to get to their homes. They're using one centralized road system to get in there and out of there. And that will end a lot of infrastructure impact, especially when eventually the valley does become. An incorporated entity, then they're gonna be able to maintain those roads. They're gonna be able to take care of them. Because they're not gonna have as much infrastructure on those or impact on those because you're going into the village core. And that's where the main traffic is gonna be coming in and out of those main arterial collector and arterial spines.
Do you know something that I don't know about, doesn't like, that we're, are we really gonna be incorporated? I know that there's a push.
If we do our job correctly. If we do our job correctly, you will be able to at some point, whether it's.
We want at some point for the valley to be incorporated, whether it's this election or whether it's way down the road. You know, that's up to the voters and that. But, you know, ultimately, that's, you know, the county. If we're not, you know, in that business, it's more, you know, for people to come and incorporate. Like for instance, out in um, West Haven, that's adjacent to the county. We want them to eventually, you know, come in and incorporate. The budding area into their, their cities. You know, the area that's next to Cooper. We wanna see those areas incorporated in. Um, and so we're not, you know.
Anexed or incorporated separately.
Either.
Either. Yeah.
Yeah.
What you guys think?
You wouldn't have anything to do.
Well, you know, I keep on saying to, at least internally, we're in the business of trying to put ourselves out of business. That's what we should be doing.
And, you know, and eventually, you know, when those areas incorporate, they're gonna need planners and people from here will go to those areas. And so. You know, it's, it's just an evolution, you know, process and.
And has the county reviewed Huntsville's various annexation plan?
Yeah, the most recent one. Yeah.
Yeah, they came in, chatted with us and um, sat down, talked to the commissioners and, and us about that.
Yeah, yeah, they just sent it over as well. And so when we're looking at the villages that we have to plan according to our general plan. Eat, uh, that Huntsville area is one of them. We don't need to, cause it's in there.
Are they looking at anything across the road?
They already have. They've started, yep.
Yeah, that's why that development's going on. We didn't see anything.
Yeah, huh, yeah. And, you know, it'll eventually trickle out and, you know, like. But um, you know, those, that, it's a very important thing. And we actually did start to look at the T D R and we created a T T, T D R plan. We started going down that road and then the commissioner said, oh, push pause on that. Uh, because we have a mechanism in place for it to go into the village areas if we rezone some of those areas. And so that's where we're currently at with the, the T D R program. So.
I wanted to um, kind of press a little bit further on the idea of banking or not banking. Areas that are developable versus undevelopable. Think about Osprey Ranch. Um, now, some might say that the reason why they did such big lot sizes in that area is because there's not a lot of areas you could put homes. And that's frankly not true. We've actually seen several plans that show hundreds of homes on that mountain. Uh, not from the current developer, from other developers. Current developer, it's hard to see a lot less. But. Osprey is a little bit of a different baby, cause you've got a whole bunch of road, a whole bunch of sewer, a whole bunch of pipe. Going all the way up over that mountain, only serving a limited number of lots. If they maximize their density, it would be one dwelling unit every hundred and fifty feet, if they could possibly make it work. Um, and so. We could create uh, an environment or a culture in codes and whatever, in which a landlord like that could do a bunch of, of. Uh, uh, large lots and then move the difference somewhere else. If we do that, we are um, adding a little bit of predictability on what the future looks like. We are.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're adding a little predictability in what the future looks like. We know kind of where that density is gonna go and how the streets are gonna be laid out. Um, and uh, with that in mind, we can work on things like um, uh. Potentially uh, creating public improvement districts, public infrastructure districts, um, special improvement districts that help fund. The cost of building these villages, cause these villages are not inexpensive. And unless you've got someone who's willing to buy a bunch of property and build a village ground up. We're gonna do this one parcel at a time.
So, and also, so Osprey kind of brings up an interesting point. So we talk about how the, you know, uh, it, it's more profitable to build a. A condo condominium, right, or townhomes and. But yet you look at Osprey and as you said, ideally you would put in two hundred and you put them every hundred and fifty feet, right? Well, that is almost proof that we don't have to do that. And you could downzone and not lose financial incentive.
I don't disagree.
So it kinda says, well, hey, you know, we might talk about you losing your financial incentive if you're right. But you downzone them, here's proof that you could and make money.
Yeah, but I don't disagree with that. So um, I, if we stick with what the plan says and we have a very limited ability. To maneuver within a fixed number of development rights. I think there's one of two outcomes that are coming your way. Number one is we try and slow everything down. If we try and slow everyone, everything down. Landowners are gonna see that resistance and say, what's the fastest way for me to make a buck? I'm gonna split this up and I'm gonna sell it. And so we lose that ability to do T D Rs, at least for those landowners who lost that motivation. On the other side, if we're really, really good at doing T D Rs, we move everything off of all of the spaces that we want to see open. At one time and move it all into the center and have all of the growing days that comes from that. Now, I'm giving you two extreme options. Obviously, there's a range in the middle there. But what the one option does is we can plan where it's going, how the streets are laid out, how wide the streets need to be, what, how much money they need to be investing into it. And the other one, I don't know where those roads are gonna go. They're gonna go wherever. And Elkhorn, which used to be Cobay, right? Well, we thought that was gonna be open forever. It's not. And there's a whole bunch more Elkhorn LLC that uh, may go up for sale.
So why, so you gave two options. What about the third option that says, why don't we, we go after more of a, uh, Osprey Ranch?
Yeah, no, no, but my two, my two options is we've got current zoning.
Why don't we go for it?
Right, so two options is current, I, I'm only specifying current zoning and general plan. The third option obviously is, let's do something different.
I think the third option really needs to be thought out. Because I, I, how many in this room have ever lived in a different winter resort area? With compact, tight zones that on the weekends and certain times fill up. How many? I have multiple places. It sucks. It is life on hell, not in hell. And that's why I live here. Now, having lived in multiple places like that, it's terrible. I would rather see this measles thing. Than, as you mentioned, maybe go through five roundabouts that are backed up. Getting from Huntsville to Wolf Creek. That would be having lived through kind of that. And worse, that would be terrible for people who live in the valley who won't see that coming and it obviously will phase in. So maybe there is a third way to adjust in various ways to create a more livable. Environment going forward that encompass, company, encompasses most of this with some adjustments.
Jeff, help me understand, uh, so avoiding those five roundabouts, if we're doing the measles map. And we're not changing entitlements, we're.
Right.
The end unit, or the end of account is that much, we would still need, or, yeah, I would think we would still need all those roundabouts.
And you might need some, but you're not gonna back them up. You're not gonna have everybody going and coming from in these. Tight corridors or reasonably tight corridors.
Good point.
On ski mornings or summer day mornings or whatever, or evenings or whatever, snowstorms, where things just get. Out of control. You're not gonna have to haul snow in trucks.
Yep.
Out of there, you're, you know, I don't know if it's planned, but with so many boats on trailers and you build condos and apartments. You've gotta have giant parking for those, or else they're just, they're gonna end up everywhere.
Yeah, we're actually thinking a little bit about that as well.
So, I mean, a third option somehow, I think really has to be given some thought. Otherwise, spreading things out, maybe it's not the measles map, but spreading things out. Um, could avoid some of that.
And I think it's gonna be probably a combination of both, because when the general plan was done, the biggest concern that the people had is. They wanted to have the preservation of the farmlands and the open space. And with the measles map, you don't get that. You just see density everywhere. Well, and, but if you took a mixture of the measles map and the other, you could still, you know, accomplish.
Yeah, I think, I think this is overplayed myself.
Well, even with the measles map, that's a lot of open space. I mean, you go to, where was it? Patio Springs? That's more, I think, what people picture when you see this. But if you really were sitting in this house, you've got two hundred feet from you in the next house.
It's elbow room. Is it open space?
Good question.
And it's really more.
Two different things and neither, sorry, neither of them are bad. It's just, what is open space?
Yes, and it was just the perception. And when the plan was done. We did present something similar to this and it was based, our consultant based it upon data. And that's not what the community wanted at the time. And so that's where we came back to the village areas. And so that's why our current plan says that.
So now we look at village, so I guess it begs the question. So if we build the village, let's just say in Eden, right? We build it out, we put a whole bunch of development units in it, let's say three thousand that's going there, all the people. Is that versus having, so we put that, the, in that area and it grows out. The traffic in that area is gonna be horrendous. And it's basically the only way to get, I mean.
That, that was the point I was trying to make with Jeff.
There's only, I mean, you have to drive through that or you have to go all the way around. And then Huntsville now is, could build something that causes another problem on that road.
You got two ways to go. Choose which way you're gonna go. Both ways are gonna be busy.
Yeah, and so, but if you spread it out and become this and less open. Yeah, it might be busy in the canyon, the, the trapper's loop into the divide, but is the valley floor gonna be busy? That's another question. So are we, I guess the question becomes, if we do the village zones, even build them out. Does that cause, maybe that makes it so that it's not so busy in the, in the main areas, cause it's slowing everybody down here. But does it slow everybody down? Or like, versus do we move that here versus here? And then does it mean we stay in the valley more because it's more spread out versus, this is so tight, I wanna go someplace else, which could be up the mountain. Or to the lake that's already busy or, you know, so.
Maybe, what do you think if you spread it out and that's a commercial?
Say what?
If you spread it, the, the used measles map, what does it do to commercial?
Good question.
It makes it harder to get commercial.
Well, I can already, I can already see a hybrid from this presentation happening. Because we have the village right here. It's already starting to sprawl. And it's gonna continue to sprawl. This is gonna sprawl this way.
But it's also going up too, cause we got so big.
You're right, it's going up too. It's going up here. It's gonna sprawl that way. And the focus is gonna be these two colored lines right here. That's gonna suck development right to that area.
And there's no way around.
That, that, that's the driver. And I mean, there's no way around it. I mean, you know, that development over here, we looked at old town, old town Eden, but they wanted to build a. That's now going to be retail or whatever they can put in there, cause now they have a. Before, they couldn't do anything but storage units, pretending how to sue.
Yeah.
Can't put a second over there.
They have to go it yet, but it, it all depends whether it's funded or not. And I, I would urge you to make one, to just keep one thing in thought. And that is sewer is all really well, but it's just engineering. It's only engineering. It's totally impossible. It's just engineering and money. Water and transportation space is something else entirely. There is only a finite quantity of water and there is only a finite amount of space to put roads. In places like the canyon and over the top of the divide. Now, trappers, I think they could make it, but they originally had six lanes, three in each direction or something. But, but the sewer, I, I would just take it off the list, cause the more I thought about it, the more I came to the conclusion it was just engineering. And that was my conclusion after John came and said. Yeah, we'll bring you the sewage from Osprey. And I said, really? Seriously? And he said, yeah. I said, okay, fine. If that's what you really wanna do. And, and he's literally bringing it all the way across the valley.
Until this last year, um, I was thinking the same thing Rand is thinking about water. Um, this last year has kinda told me a little bit of a different story. However, I still know. Several large developers in the valley looking at their development, willing to do their own well, willing to go buy their own water. Uh, now, whether or not they'll hit the water and whether or not they're gonna impact other people's wells, it's a different story, I can be told. But they'll find the resources to bring that water there.
So, so how do we encourage more of an Osprey and less of a town?
And I, and I think the other triple wildcard is that if the Olympics come back in Utah. Will it be thirty or thirty-four and will they come back to Stil basin or not? And that could adjust the pacing. By a significant amount. In the last Olympics, this area was less on the map than it is now. There were less. Developers up here with the football. And that'll all be exploited if. Any of those wildcards come to, come to be. And that, that will start happening much sooner, later, if next summer. There's any decisions. Now, Stil basin, as you guys know, have already, they've already signed a letter of intent that they will host if asked. It's unknown yet if they will be asked.
Yeah.
Um, that'll come secondary.
Um, Rand mentioned streets as well. Uh, when I said, uh, adjust your expectations. In order to exact streets, um, out of developers and street improvements out of developers. You've gotta show a decreased level of service. And what you guys understand is the level of service versus what. U dot grades as a level of service might be two very different things. The worst thing you could do. Uh, if you really think there's a traffic problem, is ask for an engineering study, cause the data's gonna come back to show that there's not a traffic problem. Uh, Nordick's traffic study with said, they were thinking that they had seven hundred and fifty units at that time. The traffic study said, from Ogden to Nordic, there are two intersections that will need to be improved at full buildout. Everything else will still function at a uh, level of service C or better. And U dot doesn't start looking at levels of service until they drop the low.
Uh, it's such a fascinating science, cause it's basically a.
Yeah.
It's gonna be good.
You got, you got cars bumper to bumper moving. And that is.
Perfect world, it makes a lot of sense.
Right.
But it never works in reality. Well, you look at, I mean, you look at it today, I mean, you, uh, trapper's loop is. You can go fifty-five the whole way, drive up there, one, eight o'clock on a, on a Burt's loop a day, you will make it. Like, it's just not feasible.
Yeah, I don't trust a lot of traffic studies, because the developer oftentimes is paying into it. And so those numbers are rigged and I, and you can find enough data to believe it.
Right.
I have flying cars by then.
You, you bring up the Osprey model as a potential third. Um, and I just wanna make sure I understand it. So the way I understand. What happened with Osprey was that, so, who their numbers, they had, they could have done two hundred homes, they've done sixty. Now, we haven't fully qualified the T D R program and the banking and all that. Um. But I'm sure that there is an assumption that the rest are banked. And so.
He's still doing two hundred homes if not there.
Right. And so my question to make sure I understand what you're saying when you say the Osprey is a potential third is. No banking. You did your sixty and that's your cap. That's, that's what that property just did.
What I'm saying is, I'm just saying, if we talk about, so we talk, you know, so there's a lot of talk that, oh, it doesn't make sense to have. You know, septic and it doesn't make sense to do this. Okay, well, why is that? Well, financial, okay, well. The Osprey subdivision kind of proved out that that's not really the case. We can, you can build homes, build lots. And sell them for enough to make it make sense that are big and, and spacious and open area. I mean. We don't call ten acre lots open area. I don't know what you do.
That's pretty good. Yeah.
So, that's my point is like, hey, we're trying to squeeze a lot more in. Maybe we don't have to. And so from a property right perspective, you might go, well, I've got two and I wanna get all my money out. Well. Maybe you don't need it, because you have the value there already. And so just a thought, I mean. And John said it, I don't know what his financials are, but he said Osprey's paying for the sewer. So the mice coming in Osprey, so. Money's there.
In Osprey, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear. In Osprey, until we say, uh, you platted, now you're done, there's no more. Anyone who build, picks up any one of those lots could resubdivide any one of those lots. So just to make sure that's clear. Now, if we change the rules to like one unit or ten acres, they wouldn't be able to.
I thought that was brought up.
They would have C C N R's, they'd have to.
Got brought up in public comment. And then John stood up at the lectern and said, now we've put it in. I thought that's what he did.
I haven't read the C C N R.
But at what point did they force you to tie in the sewer?
That's a great question.
If you're building within three hundred feet of, of the line. A lot of people are saying if you exist within three hundred feet, so if the sewer line is brought to you, you gotta connect. I don't, some people say state code says that. I don't know that it actually does. Ogden City's not doing that. Uh, for some of those who are actually now in the city. Uh, for some of those who are actually now in the city that used to be on Incorporated Islands. They're just waiting for septic systems to fail and it's cheaper to connect. That's the same thing.
Who's gonna set the price in those lines? So he sets price.
So it cannot.
Your line now?
It will be and setting the price is a very complicated process called an impact fee facility plan. You basically have to come up with a master plan and have a cost estimate for how much it costs. Then you, you look at what the impact fees were given connection and that's how much they have to pay.
That's how it's paid off or is that until forever?
It's, it's not quite like that. It's, it's more forward looking.
No, it's forever.
Well, there's, that's one of the concerns I've got with it because it's. We were in the situation where we literally did not have a way to get water. So how many have an impact fee for water when you haven't gone away and get water? Because it's geology. Geology doesn't change. Geology of what is under your feet. But the impact fee on this, on the sewer system, we're gonna have to work with an expert that says, okay. This whole thing that you're gonna build is gonna cost this much to build. And you divide by the number of units that you are going to be booking into in that system. And that's how much each one pays.
Until it's, until it's paid for.
The developer wouldn't have to pay for the improvements because he's paying for the connection impact fees, right? He's not gonna build ten houses. He just pays those ten impact fees.
Pays ten impact.
And they bring the sewer to them.
Not necessarily.
And they bring the sewer, they typically what happens is the developer brings the sewer line from his project. To where the current main line is.
But the whole impact fees over the whole system.
That's right. That's the key word, system. There's a project improvement. That's him bringing the sewer to his project. Now, there's a system improvement. That's him using the rest of the pipe that goes up to Miranda's house.
So let me ask you this. If, so he's putting, he put the line, right? He, he put the line in. They did. They're putting in, they're paying for it. If he wants to connect to it, does he have to pay the impact fee?
The Osprey, that's why there was a contract.
For just Osprey? But so like, what if he has another develop?
The two hundred units that he was bringing in, there was this big complicated contract that says.
Like on big paper.
And he was buying capacity or buying the right to capacity in treatment plant. But there was also wording that said that ultimately the impact fee is higher and you may have to pay an up charge. It, it's, it's complicated.
So, so you just said for Osprey, you didn't, but what if he has another developer? Yeah, he did say two hundred units, but Osprey's two phases, so what about?
Also, it's three different pieces. And that contract actually covers Osprey. O Bay and two hundred units in something called leading crossing, which is what Dom was referring to. When he said, I'm gonna come in and say, okay, two hundred units in this area right here now. So the total is two hundred units and then we defer two hundred units. Out of the sewage treatment plant because right now it was a fixed capacity. So we said, we can't just do this. We have to pass it adjustment. There are umpteen different pieces to this thing. But ultimately, if a new development is coming in, then that will have to pay some money. Towards that line and all of that paperwork still needs to be worked out.
Mr. Mark Gary, I, I think part of the answer to your question, uh, if I understood where your question was going is. Is there a situation in which the developer continues to charge for the pipe? So that it doesn't actually cost him any money? Is that kinda where you?
Well, I, I think his business plan's good. It don't bother me, but if it goes this way and they. Bought it out for system, okay, you need twenty million dollars, your impact fee's gonna be twenty thousand dollars. They figured it spread now. With your impact fee. From, from what I gathered is now you go come to, you, you get to pay for it yourself and the impact fee bringing it with you.
Yeah, yeah, um, but it's not double. So your pay, the impact fee you're paying for is the upsize of other components of the system. And then you're paying your project.
And then it's all pressure. So if this whole system's down, everybody in this area is on it. Everybody's out of sewer.
Yeah. But you're, you're right about the, uh, expansion. Um, we're looking at linear feet of pipe. That's the calculation, linear feet of street, linear feet of trail, that, those are the impact fee.
So they calculated the whole system, but then they go, somebody runs it this way. They, they get a fund it to take it, but it's already been in the impact.
Yeah, so the way an impact fee facilities plan works and impact the analysis works, uh, is. You have to have specific projects that you know you're gonna do. One of the easiest way to do impacts fee, impact fees is to float a bond. Or to front end it with a developer and then have the payback. Because if the entity, let's, let's say it's Wolf Creek, if the entity, um, says, we know that we need to upsize this. This, uh, line over here, maybe we're gonna run a parallel, um, gravity line over here. Um, and it's gonna cost us this amount of dollars and we believe that there are gonna be about this many connections right in there. They can come up with that impact fee, right?
Without main trunk flying around.
Right. So that's a level of service increase that they're calculating. You can, the, the impact fee can only be charged for a level of service increase. You cannot charge for existing deficiencies.
And the question is, is do they wait for people's system to fill before they can put new septic in?
Yes, and Rick mentioned, we wanna make sure it's clear. The health department has already told us, they're waiting for septic. If you have sewer out in front. They're waiting for your septic system to fill before they make it. And that, yeah, I mean, thirty-five thousand for a new septic system versus fifteen thousand for the connection.
That's not the number, by the way. We don't know what the number is yet.
I, I wouldn't assume.
Throw numbers.
One of the key questions is the expansion of the sewage treatment plant and the fact that we are. We don't have any space to put in the sewage treatment plant.
Sure.
Yeah. And how big do you go with impact? So it's like, oh, we plan this.
Exactly.
You have to have the plan. Yep. And so as, as, as soon as, uh, Wolf Creek knows how big. They could start charging money, but they can't charge the money before they know how big.
Well, the question I've got is where is the master sewer study for the north port that the county is paying for? And sunrise engineering is preparing.
Be pretty sweet.
That's been a couple of years, hasn't it?
It has.
Yeah, that's being, being completed. We've got the final document into us.
You have.
Yeah, and Gary's reviewing.
Oh, when did that come? Did that, last week or so?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's a miracle. Thank you.
It just barely happened and so Gary's looking at it. Cause we've been outing him, Sean's been outing him.
You think you've been having, what do you think I've been doing?
Many people have, yeah.
I think the sewer system's great. It's a great idea. Falcon come down. And now you have to buy it instead of their septic system.
Yeah. Uh, three hundred feet. If your dwelling unit is more than three hundred feet away from the sewer infrastructure. You don't, you're not gonna be forced.
Someone else is three hundred feet off the road, I'm good.
Even, even a private sewer system?
Uh, I don't know, the ins and outs of the rest.
Sewer system.
No.
This'll be, this'll be public.
There will be, but it's not.
The private sewer system, the, the, the state law is that private developers cannot be. The sole controlling body of the sewer system.
Body politic.
Politic, there's an elected body.
Was that Wolf Creek sewer, right?
We are elected. I am elected by the voters. Janet, you are one of my voters.
Yes, I, I remember, I voted.
But she's, she's, uh, stumping.
Yeah. I am.
Mr. Chairman, um, getting back to the, yeah, the agenda items. There's a couple of things and, and Bill, sorry that we went in a few different directions.
Oh, no, I love.
Well, actually, I really enjoyed this.
That was the point of the conversation is to stimulate this exact exchange, so I'm, I'm grateful for it.
There are two things that, that we're gonna need out of this. Um, we're kinda hitting this two prongs. One is updating the general plan with the number. The new development number, the new population numbers, we'll run some more demographics and. At least get some good information in there that we can potentially upgrade the plan later, uh, using that. Uh, but the other part is, uh, Bill's working on a, uh, water, uh, conservation plan. So the state has required all water entities to have a, a conservation plan. They've also required every jurisdiction to have a conservation plan and they've asked us to work with those water entities. And so one of the things, ways that water ties back into this conversation is if we're very successful at doing TDRs, if we ever want, you know, if we choose that we wanna do that. There needs to be water in that farm field. And water in that dwelling unit that got moved off the farm field. And so in some cases, you're not reducing your water use by clustering your, uh, dwelling units in a tighter area. Cause you still need to put water in that farm field unless you reclaim that field. Well, you'll need it for a couple of years while that, the vegetation's growing in it back in and not use it for farming. So it's kind of a, it's, it's more water, uh, to have open space. At least sort of farmed open space.
When you say the water conservation, each entity, is that the eighty-two or whatever water companies we have?
They have to be of large enough to be considered a public water company. And so, um, Wolf Creek, Liberty, Nordic Mountain, um, Eden. Some on the south side.
But not all of them.
Yeah, not the, not the smaller ones. But the smaller ones will hopefully use the plan that we're putting together, um, with you guys.
I think you, you've got to pay very close attention, sorry to butt in, but you've got to pay very close attention to that water conservation plan. To the standards that Weaver Basin has brought in as of last August. Because those now apply throughout the valley and.
Which ones are you referencing?
They.
The amount of water they're giving per dwelling unit.
Well, that, that's only part of it. There's a whole set of, of standards of. For example, on their standard is only a third of the lot may be irrigated. Um, and we basically took those and we, I mean, it's happening up and down the Wasatch front. There's all sorts of stuff. We don't know enough about where it's going to really know what's gonna happen yet. But there's gonna be a huge push to. Reduce the amount of irrigated acreage related to dwelling units. Particularly turf. So that people are going to a small amount of turf and irrigate. So I'm happy to share with you, Bill, the three of using, which is for both. We have two sets, one for developers and one for the two dwellings.
That's, that would be marvelous. Thank you.
Then in case you guys aren't aware, Weaver Basin, they dropped the amount of water they're requiring per dwelling unit and, um, outside space. So if you go and get a new well, instead of one acre foot, it's point six five and no more. And that's point four five for the indoor use and the other, the rest of it is for the outdoor use.
That's from August going forward, right? They can't take what they've already.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's from when they implemented it moving forward. So we have new wells coming online after that. And it used to be, you can have one acre foot, that's how much they're automatically gonna, going to prescribe to you if you're doing a dwelling unit in a yard. But if you're gonna do more than that, you can buy more, uh, at a quarter acre foot, uh, per, uh, transaction or whatever. Now they're just saying, no, point six five. And the difference between, so one acre foot, point four, so point five five acre feet was for outside. Um, uh, using the one acre foot, now that it's point six five, or excuse me. The point five five equals about eight thousand square feet of irrigated grass. The, uh, now that they're down to point six five, it's about two thousand square feet of irrigated grass. So. Just think about how much of your yard is actually irrigated grass and if it's more than two thousand square feet, if you were gonna pull a new well, you wouldn't be able to have much grass. That actually helps us a lot, because if we're gonna do water wise landscape requirements, we could just say, do what Weaver Basin's doing.
We definitely been doing this since, do twenty eighteen. We started in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, requiring developers. So you dive around the bridges, that's what it generates.
Right, perfect.
That's a different area than open space, even Huntsville and some parts of Limbey.
Yeah, when we first heard about the change, I remember there was a meeting, we had a workshop or something like that. Um, cause I remember one of the commissioners bringing up that we're then like. One of the words is not, but I wanna, something about, um, if we don't. Change the one per three, we're forcing people to have dead property because you can't water it. And you can't have cattle grazing because there's no grass and then, and so, um, we didn't pick up that conversation further. And that just laid there from that point, but, um. In, in terms of the valley floor without changing anything, yeah, it's just.
That's a lot culinary, okay, secondary rights.
Okay, alright. So it's just off of culinary water.
I believe.
Is it? No, the well is, as Charlie described.
If there's a secondary system serving.
They can buy secondary rights if that's what they wanna do. And I think that's what is gonna drive, you're absolutely right, uh, Jared, I think. It's gonna drive people to buy secondary rights for their property if they want to irrigate.
But there's number, so.
I was about to say, is there a?
Well, Weber Basin selling them. We can just buy a well.
Instead of filling sandbags, sounds like we should be filling water bottles. Anyway.
Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yeah.
We'll have a lot more of this same conversation when it comes.
When it comes, for sure. What elements are you wanting to carry over to the next work session and which ones do you want to deal with in the next twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Great question. We went a little. Thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So you are.
So we.
Gonna go over some of those changes.
Yeah.
We've gone over this a few times.
We have. Do you mind if we just hit on the form base and just go over the highlighted stuff?
Cover the next.
That's four.
So in a, in the next meeting, I, I, I've already got it set up with June for both of these to be back on. I just didn't think we'd get through both of them tonight. So I figured just in case, we put them both back on.
Now, we're gonna change the wording.
Which word?
Oh, yes, on the agenda. We want everyone to know exactly what it is.
Yeah, perfect.
Can we have at least a little conversation on that building height issue, which I know is one of them. That's part of the. I know, it's kind of at the end.
We start at the back and move forward. Let's start at the back.
I, I guess I asked that question.
Well, three and four.
Right.
Pretty close.
Okay.
Which one was four? Is that the form base?
It just, it doesn't say anything. Well, it does, but not for Ogden Valley, so yeah. Cause these are in, this isn't three, it, it part of Form Base two?
Um, no, three is looking at a bunch of different ordinances outside of Form Base.
And that's just that the Western Weaver is adopting.
Yeah, so Western Weaver, uh, there are a bunch of, um, ordinances that do affect you guys. And a little bit to what Jeff mentioned in the, uh, meeting. When Western Weaver, when there's something different in Western Weaver than there is in the Ogden Valley. We shouldn't be scared to call that out. In the Western Weaver, it's this way, in the Ogden Valley, it's that, that way. And you'll see some of that reflected in here. So, okay, let's go to height.
That we're pulling.
I think we're gonna start on the back of this.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna start. For the next few minutes.
Alright.
In fact, I'll tell you where to go if we're going to height. Let's go straight to.
Actually, we're gonna start at the back.
You wanna do that? Okay.
Like literally the best page is what you're looking at.
Just like the next thing in here, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's a little bit in there, but.
So you're saying page sixty-nine of sixty-nine workforce housing.
Let's start there.
Got it.
Alright. Comments, questions, concerns?
I have a strong comment on that. I've already left, Rick, no. I feel strongly that, uh, you know, for example, in a one acre area zone where we have a larger lot. That it does not make sense to require, uh, workforce and low income housing deposits or money be put in. My argument for that is if I'm building a, you know, three or four lots or twenty or whatever in large acre. All I'm doing by requiring that for them to donate is increasing the cost of all of those lots. So I'm not really giving a benefit to what's, uh, what's desired. Um, so, so in, in, in this map, you look at this, you've got, you know, this is, you could look at this as townhomes and high density. And you could look at these outlying areas as one acres and who's gonna be the main, uh. You're gonna have more families in the larger lots than you will in a, in a condo. I mean, that's fair to say. It's not a hundred percent across the board, but I think it's fair to say. So if we encourage the lots to be less money on the outside edge. I think that makes more sense, because you're gonna draw in more of the, I say desirable, uh, multi. I, I, it's fair, is it fair and safe to say that a family is desirable in the area? So you can have kids that play soccer and that, you're gonna draw that in.
You're seeing that families aren't moderate income, like we're not gonna see as many moderate income families, is that?
No, no, I'm saying that if I was a family trying to move up in here, even if I had lower, if I had lower income, in e- either scenario. No, no, I'm saying that if I was a family trying to move up in here, even if I had lower, if I had lower income, in either scenario. Our ideal is gonna be an acre lot, right? I mean, usually you have a yard, there's gonna be ideal. Now, that's gonna apply across the board. But I think you're gonna see that more, um, more. If you take a statistical value, you'll see more, that's the desire. And if you have more kids, if you have kids, you have, you know, you have, it's easier to take care of the yard, right? That kind of thing.
Yeah, got it.
Um, so my, my thought on this is we shouldn't increase the lot, the va, the cost of those lots by putting the burden on them. And that's my argument against saying they need it because we're just increasing the cost for something that doesn't necessarily. Effect that we're already, there's already a benefit to having those lots or that type of lot, I think, than versus. A condo where we're wanting to have somebody, a condo above a shop, we're wanting to have some benefit there. I think is a two different arguments. So that's my, kind of more or less my case for why I think it doesn't make sense to charge a developer. Those. Workforce housing and make them participate and fee and lose and that kind of thing.
Are you comfortable with the, the way that, uh, eight thirty-seven, eight thirty-eight is written in that case? Sorry, why is eight thirty-seven, eight thirty-eight?
I am, um, I'm.
It's okay. I wrote, I wrote it that way, cause I knew you'd be okay with it. At least I, I figured you'd be okay with it.
I don't know how the rest of you feel. That's my thoughts.
I, I personally have to say I have a struggle. To believe that. Government manipulated workforce housing in the valley is ever gonna be anything other than manipulated, abused. I think it's great if Snow Basin or Powder Mountain wanted to invest. And did invest in workforce housing that they controlled within their employee base. Great if they need to do it and that they can fund it like a lot of series do. Government manipulated programs like that in the valley. I personally think over time they will be so badly abused, it will become a giant problem. That's my, I can't support. Anything where the government is gonna get involved with manipulating something like this.
What do you see as abuses?
People being in there that shouldn't, people not working in the valley, people renting their places out. It happens.
The money that was donated going to something else.
All sorts of manipulation, especially when Ogden is so close. And when I was looking at some of those census numbers, I pulled up some census thing that said currently, the average. Valley resident drives thirty-one minutes to work. That's people who live in there. They drive somewhere thirty-one minutes to work somewhere else. I know plenty of folks who in the valley who drive to the Air Force Base and such. Um, so I'm just saying what I think.
So if I heard you correctly, a measure to support, not requiring, that is something you would support.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what this is, that he wrote in here.
Yeah, so, uh, eight thirty-seven, thirty-eight, uh, participation is required. Except when developing along a large lot residential, rural residential and state law residential street.
So in essence, the goal here is, cause if you're gonna, so if you're gonna build a Nordic style development. Right, where you've got lots of condos, you've got kind of a ski resort, you've got commercial. We're, we're kind of going, yeah, it makes sense, right? Cause you got lots of homes, you got businesses under.
My property manager that's gonna live there.
More or less, yeah, like it kind of makes sense to say, alright, let's look at a, a workforce housing.
The business owner should do it, manage it, live with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do all over.
I totally agree.
Didn't the state say something that we had to do something happy? That's the problem.
So today we are required to have a plan. Now they are ramping up to make that plan mandatory at some point in time. They just.
For a couple of years.
Yeah, they haven't done it yet.
But also, like. We just, cause when. We decided we did, we weren't gonna make them, right? That we gave them options. I remember with the Nordic Valley thing.
There are options.
We gave them an out. They just had to give the value to the housing authority.
So starting at.
No, I know, but, but I, I agree with you. I, I think that the resorts should staff their. Their people rather than saying like, oh, we need to have, you know, in this. Pristine place that costs a ton of money to live, we need to have the government actually kind of make workforce housing.
So I think you're making a great point, both of you. But in this, what it does is it allows the person to make the choice. So if they wanna do it themselves, they can. If they wanna just pay it and get rid of it, they can. And it kind of leaves them open to make that choice while also allowing them to do it. So like in our ideal world, they would manage it and it'd look great. But this gives them that ability to use the government source here. Aside from here where we're saying. Look, you don't have to do it if it's just single family residences in larger lots, right, Charlie? That's the intent.
Yeah, smaller lots still request, the smaller single family and then all the multifamily would still need to contribute. That, they're the ones in the village centers essentially, so they're a little bit more.
I get, I approve the, the verbiage. I just, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I just think that we should, rather than getting it out, I think that they should just. But I get that that's not what's on the table at the moment.
Add something, but I don't know that, what would we even add to make it say that we encourage them to?
You say rather than giving these folks in these three street types an out? Is that what you're saying?
No, no.
No, I was.
In general, how do, what she's saying is in general, how do we, how do we encourage them to manage their own workforce housing? Instead of leaving it open. That would be ideal, but in these ways, they could just pay the fee and move on, is what.
They're doing, they're putting workforce housing on site.
Oh, I thought we won't, but okay.
For example, Elterra, they owns twenty some ski resort. They're investing fifty million dollars next year in workforce. They're gonna build it, own it. Operate it and including at Summit Deer Valley on their own land.
So I think this, the goal, granted, it's not perfect, right, government? So you look at Eden, right? You've got a commercial storefront, whatever that may be. The goal is to reduce traffic and try and have some kind of workforce housing, right? That's, that's what we would like to see. It's like, hey, if we could have. Some kind of workforce housing for the local restaurant. And I think this solves the problem this way too, is it lowers the cost of these outline. And I, I actually would probably, now that I'm talking through this, it would prob, I probably would apply it more generally to even the lower ends. Because you look at it and go, well, if I lower the cost of those lots, cause they don't have to burden that, right? So if it's not the commercial with the, the people on top or the condos on top. It lowers the cost of those lots and the people can, I mean, you could have a sixteen, seventeen year old that works in the restaurant and it does solve both problems.
I don't think it lowers the cost of the lot. I think.
How does it not go up the last lot? Cause I gotta pay a fee to.
The developer's gonna charge market value for the lot regardless. It's just the difference in what they're pocketing. That's, that's why I'm not too. We're worried about it from. It being too expensive for someone.
Market basing, but yeah, I mean, either way. He's not gonna sell it until it's gonna reach that level anyway. So if you, if you start with a higher cost, you're still gonna have a higher cost. If it's lower, they can, they can make their margin.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's what a lot of developers are telling us is that. Regulation is pricing them out of the ability to develop.
Yeah.
Is, is what you're saying.
So we remove some of that regulation, they still can make their margin, even if market rate's higher, but we're, we're reducing what it has to be.
Okay, the one thing that I want to mention, if we do even bring it down into some of the smaller lots, the smaller single family plus. There are still gonna be families that wanna have a yard that might still be under that median household income. Um, and so if they're trying to find something that's affordable and we don't have that allowance in those, uh, single family areas. There just won't be any available. So I'm kind of thinking about the teacher.
You're saying that supposedly if these like small, these smaller ones. Um, someone wants to buy them and you're, you're actually assuming that they're donating land and actually putting houses there, which is. Not necessarily what's happening.
They can do assumption, yeah.
Yeah, cause most of the time what they're gonna do is donate a very small portion of land and it's gonna get sold and someone else is gonna get a benefit for it.
Yeah, you're right.
Are we delineating between government type employees and commercial type employees at some point?
Yeah, so the, the definition of, uh, workforce housing is either a. When you say delineating, there's, they're both clumped under workforce housing. Yeah, so sorry, no, we're not delineating, but they're all.
Are we separating between something, somebody would buy and own versus rent and be controlled by some government entity?
Um, we could, we could separate that out, but this doesn't.
This doesn't, okay.
So currently, if you go to go to the Form Base Village, you have to do something with this, with workforce housing. And if, if, for example, the Sunny Bill, if they wanna put it in, they have to donate something. Well, that's an excess cost that it wasn't born before. Or, and it also doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense, cause no one ever is gonna, I mean, not necessary, I guess it's hard to say never, but. They're, what they're donating, it also sounds bad, right? So if they say, oh, we're, we're gonna put, we have to put this, we're gonna put this small section, we're gonna donate it to workforce housing that. You could build on, but everyone would hate it. So no one's really gonna do it. They're just gonna sell it to the housing authority. And the housing authority is gonna maybe build a project somewhere in the valley, but more likely somewhere else.
Yeah.
So it's like, it, it's, it's not really super beneficial. Better to lower the cost as best we can of regulation than I think.
Sunnyvale has to do it. But Osprey Ranch doesn't.
Sunnyfield would if they rezone to the Form Base.
It's just anything in this zone.
Uh, I wanna make sure a couple of things are, are clear. If, let's say it's Sunnyfield, if they, uh, do donate lots. The, the ordinance doesn't allow those lots to be sold by the housing authority. Um, the only, the housing authority could flip what we did for, um, Nordic. We wrote it that way in the Nordic agreement, but here, those lots are reserved for, they're be deed restricted for moderate income.
Well, it says right here that I could select, in lieu of building affordable housing, I can subvert lots in size and features capable of supporting dwelling units. An amount that is equal to or greater than ten percent of the workforce housing.
Yeah.
Doesn't that mean I can donate a building lot in lieu?
To the housing authority, yes. But that lot would be deed restricted for, uh, moderate income. So they're not going and flipping that parcel.
I thought you had said that they could sell that and use it to build something somewhere else.
Nordic. So that was just exclusive to the Nordic.
It was in the agreement, right?
Yeah, these would be required to stay right there. So that's kind of, the thought was, alright, Sunnyfield, how do we help them? Not incur significant costs. They're already gonna be building a road in. Okay, that's, that's fine. They're all gonna be putting all the, the, uh, utility lines in. So they're gonna have to pay a little bit extra in stubs to stub to those two lots. But, and the lots are small, they're in a corner, so it's least impactful to the size of the other lots that they could sell. So they, in, intent was to try and cut the cost down so as least impact to the developer and give them the two extra development.
Other thing that we didn't talk about was if you, the, currently. With workforce housing, you can build it anywhere with no rate. There really isn't.
That's, that was, I was gonna bring that up.
So it, it, so, so what we're doing in this, in essence, is forcing someone to do it. Versus just, right now, they can do it. This, we're forcing it. So right now. If, I know Jared, you have a bunch of land. If you wanted to build a whole bunch of like houses on it, little, little, what is it? Three hundred, four hundred square feet? Is that what we're the minimum?
Four hundred is minimum.
Four hundred square feet houses, you could do that right now with, and it meets code.
Under the current ordinance.
Yeah, as long as you rent it out to someone that makes, I mean, we looked at median, I mean.
Forty-eight or forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
So that just solves that problem, economic.
And there's no, no regulation against.
There's no limit.
Go into this zone, we're forcing them to do that, which I think is the scarier part. It's like, I know you have to do this right here. And it de blocks that, like you said, or it sells it.
Well, so let's.
Or not.
Let's go back to that. So part C eight seventy, workforce housing location. It could be anywhere within, the way that it was written. Anywhere within a mile. Of, uh, mixed use, commercial, manufacturing, uh, yada, yada, or not manufacturing, sorry. Mixed use, commercial, multifamily residential, um, vehicle oriented, commercial and government institutional. That's what the current code says. The way this is being revised, it now says, um, it can be outside of the proposed development. Along a government institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use, commercial, multifamily residential, small lot residential. Or medium lot residential street. And so we are requiring it to be.
Has to be in that. Is that what this is now saying? Which that makes lots, that's better. I like that.
I, I figured you would. And I, I've got less angst about this than I do about not having the others participate, but honestly, you guys do what you wanna do. If you're comfortable with this, let's get in program commissioners.
I like this better.
Could you in some way flip this in, in some. Portion to where the onus goes to employers, not developers, where you say picking a hundred, if you employ more than a hundred people. You have to underwrite so much housing cost for some aspect to your staff, leave. Developers out of the equation. So then some developer might have the incentive to go build a village somewhere, employee base of village. That's well maintained, but big employers like the ski areas or whatever would then have to be. Putting money into this and they're the ones who need to anyway.
Yes, for sure.
Would that meet state requirement?
Yes.
I think it would definitely help.
As long as we're creating workforce housing, that would meet the state requirement.
Okay, so in my opinion.
That's what Nordic.
Yeah.
Is going to do.
Yeah, so.
So what we did with Nordic is we said, you're gonna do it this way. Satisfy these requirements. And Nordic said, okay, well, the way I'm gonna do that is I'm gonna have a contract with everyone who comes in, the restaurants and the hoteliers and all those. To make sure that they're the ones who are providing this for me. Um, so he's gonna get out from under it by making, just doing exactly what you're doing. It gets more complicated when we start doing that, um, because number one. I know our economic development director is really hasty about that, um, but.
Businesses, the bigger businesses already exist.
Sure.
They already have the problem.
Sure.
It seems that not every employee who might be compensated in some way for that would even want to. Someone might want to live closer to school or closer to.
Yeah.
Wherever.
There's a much more complicated formula out there. We decided not to use it, cause it was complicated. That actually involved. Uh, certain business types, how many employees those types of businesses need, how many of those employees are going to be at the moderate income or below. Um, again, based on the type of business and then, um, saying that's the number, that's the target number of housing we need. We need to be able to house this amount of people. It's just. Are we gonna tell that restaurant owner who's trying to move in or Terry, the owner of Valley Market? That he's not only building a grocery store, he's also building housing. And if we are, great, let's do it that way.
That seems like it fits the valley's mode better.
That is directly proportionate to the impact.
And, and it fits immediately with, would impact the employees who need it the most.
Yeah.
The biggest number of the ski areas, probably.
So does it have to be? We already have a hard time getting commercial. Like, we already don't.
Right? Yeah, and if we make a hard to fast cut offs for a ten to like hundred employees. Yeah.
Anyway.
Hey, can we spend five minutes talking about height?
Yeah, let's, let's. What do you? What do you guys think of this revision as it currently sits? So what that, what it is, is instead of making everyone that's in the zone participate with it, it says the large lots don't have to. And anything that's participated has to stay in that mapped area.
Well, in a mapped area, not that mapped area. If you wanted that mapped area, I could make it that.
Let's make it that. No, cause it, cause it, well, then it defeats the purpose of transportation.
Yeah. If they're over in order to drive it over to Eden.
Yeah, yeah. And it's gonna be tough. I don't know that you're gonna get people to build it anyway, cause of regulations, but.
We're gonna put this in place today and in two years, it's gonna be changed anyways. So it's, you're probably gonna have very little participation anyway on this right now.
But I would say in that area of where it was donated. So if a lot is donated there, it needs to be in that map. So it can be walkable or bike-rideable real easy. I think.
Yeah, I like it. Make it happen. It's not forcing the moderate income person to be there, but it is forcing those units to, so that.
We're definitely ahead of the game of where the state is, so we're, we're doing something in ordinance.
Yeah, the recommendation, uh, you know, the angst that I have, it's not real angst. Because we're one step closer to actually implementing something when other jurisdictions are just struggling to try and figure out how to get their head around it.
So we're good. This is good, other than we're making the change that if I donate this lot in this area, it stays in that mapped area. That's the only change from what this says.
Okay.
Yeah, good work.
Other than being six foot one, what, uh, how do we wanna talk about height?
Where, where is?
Yeah, so I, I saw somewhere that in all the foreign based villages. Based on the work at Nordic, if you said fifty, fifty.
Line three thirty eight.
And my observation was just based on the style of buildings and. Whatnot and what exists in Ogden with that style in the period, it just doesn't fit.
Yeah.
Fifty foot buildings that didn't exist in that era, popping up out of the ground and close to the road. Where everything else is low. And you look at those nice buildings being built over right now, um, behind the blacksmith shop. Those are nice and low, they fit, they look good. If those were fifty foot tall, they would look terrible.
Yeah.
It is, even though they're off the road, that's still a little tall.
Yeah.
What's, what's a height that's not too tall?
But we're reducing the heights, right, from fifty to forty?
That's, that's what he's proposed. That's what I proposed.
As an Ogden developer who works with that period building. And he went through all the, the math. I still think fifty, forty's a little too tall. He. And I guess it depends if you want two story buildings or three story buildings.
Right.
And how close to the road do you want them? And do you wanna say next to the road, you're two stories? Back a ways, you can do three stories, which I think is more reasonable.
That was the next question.
And if you go to Wolf Creek, there are what, four story buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Up there, but they're way back against the hillside and they don't look as terrible.
They're also a ski resort.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. But what I'm saying is, in the form based villages, my outlook from an aesthetic standpoint. Um, based on the renderings that they're supposed to look like, on the road should be two story. A jade back from the road some distance, maybe three.
Yeah, I like it. Let's do it. What's, what do you guys, what's Carlos and Harley's right now? That is very tall. It does.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's think about this real quick, yeah. You're going from fifty to forty. You're not gonna get more than a three level structure. Because you're not gonna do a flat roof lightly. You're gonna need twelve feet for retail or our commercial space on the main level and two stories on top of that, plus a pitched roof. You're gonna need forty feet. How do they measure height? Cuz I heard that it's not actually the highest point.
It's the average.
It's a, it's average.
It is the average.
Why do you need two stories on top of the twelve feet?
No, I'm just saying, say you're, we're, we're trying to promote density in these. Form based villages, you're limiting, if you go forty feet, you're basically limiting that structure to three levels. Twelve feet on the main level and two ten foot levels above that with a pitch roof.
Yeah.
My suggestion was you have to balance density with what the valley aesthetic should be. And if you create these giant fifty foot buildings and everything else around it is low.
Yeah.
It's gonna look terrible. So my suggestion was less than forty feet adjacent to the roads. And then maybe forty feet back some.
So, you know, there's municipalities I work in where they do that. They basically step up as you get further off the road.
This building right next door, step back, you got.
Yeah.
Is it two stories or three stories up front and then very tall in the back?
Yeah, that's a good, good example of that. So I don't know if you, I mean, forty works.
What's thirty five?
Huh?
What's a thirty five foot building? Does that give you just two stories?
Thirty five probably.
Yeah, most residential structures, they have either two stories or thirty five feet.
Our maximum height for residential structures is thirty five, unless you're in a cluster subdivision, then you could go forty. But the idea behind that difference is that most of that's gonna be pitched roof. Um, a lot of these are gonna be flat roofs, at least in the Old Town Eden area. New Town Eden will probably see a variety of different roof types, but. It is the average. So basically, you take the high point, you measure it to the dirt. And you take the lower point, you measure it to the dirt, and then you take the difference of the two.
But even a flat roof, you're still gonna have to have a parapet.
So parapets aren't included in height.
So they may seem like the top layer of the unit.
Yeah, yeah, as long as there is, there's, parapets are included, but if you. Do have something higher, I think it can't be more than fifteen feet higher than whatever the normal is. And that's, that's a different section.
My conversations, some of this is based on, so who's brought up? Someone mentioned that. The height of those buildings and the, the basically unrestricted growth that could happen if we go to that across, across, it becomes a. Yeah, you're also promoting sprawl, cuz you can't get all the density with, I, I, I'm, trust me, I don't want tall buildings. I'm not a big tall building guy, but you're promoting sprawl if you're gonna go tall. If you can't get the density right.
Oh, my gosh.
Right after the other.
We got, we got. We got. More park, less city, sprawl and tall. I like it.
I wanna see that on the county's website.
You know, I, I had a question, um, I wondered what, how your, your guys' response would be. Just a hypothetical, crazy hypothetical. If I could build one building in the middle of Eden and put all the development, I'd say the Ogden Valley in it. Would you go for that?
The first police in the middle of Old Town.
Just one, yeah, one building, unlimited height.
I don't think so, because you go to Trinidad and they have these two huge skyscrapers in the middle of there that the oil industry built. It looks so out of proportion.
With everything else.
The village area.
Would you be able to look past that one and see all the part?
I never could. I could never get past that. And I was like, why are these two skyscrapers?
Open it up for people to rock climb and rappel from, because the valley might go forward.
We'll paint it the color of the valley floor down here and then blue up on top.
No, I, I just, I'm asking the question cuz I. Forty feet pretty much limit you to three levels of construction.
Okay, so what I heard was up next to the road. Two stories?
I think that, I mean, based on what I've seen and I made a special trip down Twenty Fifth Street the other day just to look at that.
Yeah.
And the period buildings. And the, the other architecture for, for Newtown. Uh, fits that as well and almost all the pictures in here are all two story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that makes sense to me and having seen this in other ski towns where it's been a mistake or done good. Lower looks better by the road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially if people are gonna go underground too for parking and things, I would imagine, there'll be more of that.
Yeah.
So what's the realistic, what's an old town height? I mean, that's what we've already determined. But is that twenty feet? Is that thirty? Thirty feet?
Thirty, thirty five feet, yeah.
So thirty or thirty five?
Well, it depends on your room.
I think you'd wanna go thirty five just to give them that flexibility.
Can you say two story up to thirty five?
Yes, definitely. That's absolutely right.
But you said that that doesn't include.
Parapet wall, it doesn't include the parapet wall, so you can go an additional fifteen if you wanna do parapet.
Actually at thirty.
That's a big parapet. I think the market's gonna kind of root that out.
Commercial. Ten foot residential.
That'll take them to forty.
With some space.
Uh, if it's an accessory, oh, wait, wait.
Minimum main building.
So, so the minimum, if you, if you have something that's too low, it's gonna look weird as well. And so if you have a flat roof that's right at a certain height, it's gonna look odd. And so trying to. Balance the height and the low, um, is what that twenty five is. We can go lower than twenty five if you want to. I mean, if you did single story, you'd have to do at least fifteen cuz the minimum is fifteen.
For example, those new blacksmith buildings are one story, but the facade is pretty tall.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's actually, I think, how a lot of people doing one story would do it. They would just build a tall parapet wall to meet, to get up to the twenty foot. But the twenty five foot.
Tall ones is probably twenty feet or something. No, I think they're taller than that. Just, and I was just standing up there nearby and they appear to be pretty tall for a one story building.
So I tried to calculate Carlos and Harley's just using Google Earth. It's a little hard to do it. Perspective doesn't work very well, but it looked like about a fifty foot tall to the top of their. Parapet wall slash gable. And that parapet wall just goes over where the gable is. Um, and so it, it's a tall building. But it might not, don't quote me on that, it might not be exactly that high.
Aren't they redesigning it? There was, she, like a year ago, uh, when Brandon Hammond bought it, she put something, article in the paper about how. They were going to.
Resign the outside?
He was gonna use the suite on the second floor, so they can throw a bar.
So are we forty feet? Is that what we're thinking? Let's say forty. I, I really think that the community is gonna wanna push that because they want it to be lessened. And I, I, I don't blame them, and I think that they're gonna push for the lower amount that we say, whatever it is. And, or whatever they propose. And, and you mentioned sprawl. I think they'll be all right with it because they're gonna have to make two changes to the color and where it's gonna be a lot. You got two public hearings to do that and then. It gives the public two chances to make.
What are you proposing?
So.
Whatever we're proposing.
Yeah, you guys tell me. Um, I was thinking, um, thirty five and then up to forty.
So thirty five by the road, two story.
No taller than thirty five.
Three story up to forty.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, fair. Good, well, that solves two things that we don't have to talk about next week.
Okay.
Um, just so you know, the one that you guys have in front of you, uh, go through the rest of the highlights. Uh, I mean, you can go through the rest of the other red lines, um, as well, but you've already seen all that, um, as long as you don't, you're eating, so. And I haven't heard any feedback on any of the other red lines before the highlighted areas, so hopefully that means you guys are okay with it.
I think those ones are harder cuz you don't know how it applies, right? You talk about like the thoroughfares, right? That's one of the things in here and it's just like, I don't know, I don't know what that looks like. I'm not sure where that looks in the, in the Ogden Valley. It's. Hard, where, you know, you can look at this facade and you go, oh, as this applies, if that's put right there.
Yeah.
What does that look like?
Yeah, it is, it is hard, uh, to know. And if you don't know, just point them out. Um, I can, we can email back and forth. With all you guys, it's a lot easier to email and try and explain those things rather than spend a couple hours in a meeting.
I'm sure. Unrelated question, so it doesn't need to keep everybody here, but the articles come out about. Club Med separating from Snow Base and the project, and we've had made a recommendation, which I imagine that the founding commissioners have approved them. To subdivide and do all that before the employees were in.
That was generally.
Was that tied to Club Med? Was that, well, that can, like, how did that?
Yeah, what happens now? Do those get named?
It's gonna end up probably just dying.
So did they ever move forward with subsidizing and all that stuff? No, so it'll just, that contract dies or is actually out there?
I think it sits out there, just like this hotel that's been sitting out there and they can come back and say.
They have to come back and reapply.
Really? For all of it or?
There's only, what's the timing? Trying to think, there's, there's a certain amount of times that it's just. They have no rights. It's, it, right now, she's there.
I was concerned cuz we discussed it and the discussion was, well, because it's such a name and they have this pot of money and. There wasn't gonna be this cement block like Powder Mountain. Then I was like, oh, I'm reading that they're gone now, like.
That's exactly what we said, yeah.
Did you guys know that Club Med is? And the play was because they also own the largest travel agency outside the US. To match the two together and haul Chinese tourists on stop.
Is that why?
I remember Club Med saying they weren't going to close on the deal unless the. I think there was multiple issues that ended up killing the deal. That was one of them, cuz I was gonna say, I wouldn't bet.
Close on the lamb if I didn't have a sewer. And who knows when that's gonna come?
Yeah.
So.
Um, and also the market, um, that was an issue too.
So. Next Tuesday is a work session, right? Tuesday here. And we need to, uh, hold on to this.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
We're not gonna bring this to your house again. Is this Kindling, the old one?
Yes, Kindling.
You guys recycle here?
Yes, we do. Yeah, feel free to leave if you brought yours.
As of today, okay, I was just saying, cuz sometimes it's a little hairy.